So good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually pursuant to the governor's executive orders for at least another, at least until May 20. Mr. Levy and Mr. Hardman are absent tonight and Mr. Lowe and Mr. Baralek are seated for him, but I've just lost Mr. Baralek. Where did he go?
Yeah, well, he's not back in the room. We must have lost his internet.
Okay, so we're just gonna wait a minute till we get Mr. Baralek back, but in the meantime, I'm going to announce the postponements. We have item one B has been postponed. That's Greenwich Woods Realty LLC at 1165 King Street for converting an existing skilled nursing facility into an assisted living facility. Application number three Timothy K Saunders Jr. For a final subdivision at 249 Valley Road. Application number five in the public hearing Jonathan and Akko Sanga Horton at 100 Brookside Drive for a zoning map amendment. Application number eight Shiao Qiu Kin and Hui Wen for a final re-subdivision at 1 Florence Road. And we have Mr. Baralek is back. Those people are the items that have been postponed from the agenda tonight. And with that, those announcements, we will now begin with the first item. It's a discussion item. Pre-application for St. Savior's Episcopal Church at 350 Sound Beach Avenue. This is for playground equipment in the back of the church. And who is speaking for the applicant?
I believe it is Anna Waters.
And Ms. Waters, you should be all set in a minute.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Hi.
So you should be all set to go if there's anything that we've all read your, your material. If there's anything you would like to tell us about your application. Oops. Sorry, that was me talking to my technology, not to you. Sorry.
That's okay.
If you would like to go ahead, Ms. Waters.
And so as you may know, the original complaint was a misunderstanding about they, the complainant thought that there were children from the nursery school going into what is behind the church, which is 385 Park Avenue, which is also known as the rectory. So, um, so when the planning and zoning guys came, they realized that that, that wasn't the issue because we now have a young family living in that property, members of the parish. So, um, but in coming to have a look at that, the, um, the guys realized that our original permit from 1960 was, um, not being held up to. And subsequently, as you will notice, um, that from the, um, survey that the line of the actual survey line of the church, eh, some of it, the playground is moved into what is 85 Park Avenue South, which is the, which is the property belonging to the church as well, as we know is the rectory. So we now need to make sure that we are compliant with planning and zoning.
Okay. And so that's why you've got to go through the application process. Now, what from what I understand though, your, your equipment is, goes across the property line from one to another.
Yes.
And so you're going to have to do something with those properties because you're using them in common.
Right? Okay.
And.
We need to know what we need to do to make this right. I mean, as you may appreciate, this equipment has been there, uh, over 45 years. And we are the current custodians of property. So we want to make sure that we are right by planning and zoning.
Okay. Well, you have a couple of options. What has staff indicated to you in terms of which one they would prefer?
I have not, that we have to apply for a new permit.
Okay. Well, you could merge the two properties.
Okay.
And turn them into one. Katie Patrick, is that your preferred option for since they're using both properties as one?
That is definitely an option. Um, the other one, I mean, you, you can't move the equipment at this point, right?
No.
No. Um, what is, what are the ramifications of merging the property from your standpoint?
As far as the church is concerned?
Yes.
Um, that is a good question. I don't think there is any ramifications because.
Anna, if I could interrupt just a second. You may not be aware of Episcopal diocesan rules about, uh, about property. But you'll have to, you'll, you'll, if you, if you, if you scratch that surface, you'll see that to do anything with deed, you're probably about nine months, uh, in dealing with the folks in Meriden trying to get approval from the standing committee and all that sort of stuff.
Okay.
You, my suggestion to think about is a simple license agreement. It gets recorded, uh, recorded that allows, that, that, that provides that the, the, uh, directory property can utilize the ground on which the playground equipment is situated. Which I think would be a whole heck of a lot easier than merging.
It's a nursery. It's, I think it's the nursery school property. Um, the, well, the thing is, Ms. Waters, we're, I think if we know that you're working on the violation, we don't mind waiting. So it's really, if you want to, if, as long as we know that you're in the act of correcting what, by the way, is Ian Montgomery here to speak with you, Ms. Waters? He has his hand up.
He.
No, okay. I'm just checking that it's not someone that you know that has their hand up that wants to, so.
Oh, he's, he's, he's a director.
He's director. Okay. So why don't we let him, he might want to chip in.
And I'm not sure if license agreement or easement, but something along those lines.
Okay. So whatever you.
Merging. I think getting a license sounds much better idea.
Yeah.
We know.
I've got a little bit of experience with this, and if you want to call me offline, I might be able to help you.
Okay.
No, that. No, you can't do that. It's an application before us. You're cooked.
I'm also the rookie and I don't know what the rules.
No, no. Once an application's before us, you, you, Mr. Commissioner, sorry, you can't help miss, nice Ms. Waters. But we can, but staff can help you. And the advice that we, we would tell you this is we know you're working on it. And as long as we know you're working to rectify and, uh, something that has gone wrong and that you're not meeting your, your initial decision letter, we would give you time to resolve it as you see fit.
Okay.
As is best for the church. So if you want to do a merger, if you find a way of doing an easement, whatever works for you, and then just come in and have us approve the playground.
Okay.
Um, this would be a special permit, right, Katie? So it's got to come to us?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, so just whatever works. We're not in a hurry as long as we know you're working on it.
Okay. Uh, so I'll talk to the guys at Stephen Mangs about my next steps.
Yep.
Okay.
And the thing to discuss when you talk, um, to the diocese is if you were ever going to want to expand into the playground area, if the church was ever going to want to do an addition or something, it's beneficial for you to have that as part of your property. Looking at this eyeballing it, I don't think you would ever be able to spin it off anyway and make it back into a separate property. Does the rectory also encroach on it? Does the rectory have a building that's also on the property? It seemed like it did when I was looking at it. Or is it just the playground?
It's the playground that goes into the, into the rectory. So it's on, so some of the playground is on the rectory property line.
Madam Chair, this line here is the property line for 80 Park. And so this is the area of encroachment that we're.
So I'm just, um, I'm just going to throw some other stuff. I mean, for you all to think about then. One day you might, that, that you might want to sell off the rectory property and have it confirmed as a separate lot. But since you have that encroachment on it right now, that would be difficult for you. The church has, I'm sure, like any church has great real estate people that will advise you no end.
Okay.
So it's whatever is best for the, whatever is best for you in the long term.
Excellent. Um, just checking that Ian Montgomery didn't still want to speak because he is the.
Mr. Montgomery, you are unable to speak. I can't see him right now, but.
Maybe not.
Thank you. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I was simply going to thank, um, uh, Mr. Baralek for his advice to stay out of diocesan politics as far as possible. He's absolutely correct.
I'm a little partial to the PB, so.
Oh, the presiding bishop's terrific, but he's right. I, I think we should probably aim toward whatever will allow the church the greatest flexibility of choice in the future. And prob, and merging the properties doesn't sound flexible for the future.
That is what both Mr. Baralek and I were saying to you in different ways.
Yep.
If the church wanted to expand into that property, you might eventually want to merge it. But on the other hand, you would lose the ability to spin it off. And sometimes people need to raise money. And you would be better off keeping it separate if you wanted to spin it off. So if you have that, that conversation with yourselves, um, any of those options work.
Anyway, and I wanted to thank you for the flexibility and the, the, the understanding. We're, we're sort of new to this. Obviously, it's 45 years of, uh, non-compliance. We apologize for that. Ignorance not being a defense, but we do claim absolute ignorance.
We have to go around, we have to go around our neighborhoods with blinders on because you wouldn't believe all the stuff that happens in all the neighborhoods we live in. And we know their violations and they've been there forever and ever. And I think about an angle I have. Because a lot of things need permits that you don't realize do. One of my, you know, fences, funny things need them. Um, so that would be your key.
Okay.
Everything else, I think from your write-up, you're meeting all the conditions that are required for your nursery school. You're in good shape. Nick, did you have any comments? Um, or you asked a question at the briefing and I can't remember what it was.
I think you, you actually covered it in terms of, uh, the lots being, uh, with the construction of both lots without, it straddles the line. So kind of separating it out, making it, uh, tying it up. So it actually works, works right.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Can, can they, uh, would it be possible in a situation such as this to transfer that encroaching area?
No.
No.
Oh, they would diminish the lot size and it would be harder for them to validate it as a separate lot down the road. That's one of the things they need to look at. So you could, you could do a lot line revision is what it's called. And you could move that piece of the rectory property over to the nursery school or to the church property. But your issue is you are then making that rectory property very small and you would have to decide whether that really made sense for you in the long term.
Yeah, I, I would think that some kind of revocable easement that you give yourself from one lot to the other that you could revoke if you ever needed to sell either, either property is the easier way to go.
Yep. And then, you know, we might, you know, I don't know, tell you to put some plantings on it. I don't, um, you certainly, I can't think of. Normally with these things, we focus on whether there's lights and noise. And obviously you've been here for a long time and you're, you haven't had any complaints. You did have one complaint, I guess, but, um, that would be it.
Yep. We could, we currently have a fence which delineates it to the extent that we didn't know that it wasn't the property line. It's been there so long.
It's amazing, isn't it?
And the complaint centered around, uh, uh, from a, uh, a lot that was adjacent to the rectory yard that does not attach to anything to do with the nursery whatsoever. Not the area of the rectory that's being used by the nursery.
Isn't that funny?
It, it's just something entirely different.
So that's funny.
It's just a neighbor that doesn't want, uh, a family playing in its own yard.
Well, there you go. Um, it could have been noise. Um, I used to back onto an elementary school and sometimes during recess, it would, I would be, I would think I had had quieter moments. Um, so you're all set. You would, staff will give you all the guidance that you need and you can go, go forward and address the issue.
We'll see you soon.
Yes. Okay. Just keep us posted on progress. If you get held up with anything, just let us know.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Our next application is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission's Proposed Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I suppose I have to talk about that, huh?
Nobody better.
So, uh, the commission has discussed this. Oh, I forgot to ask for public comment on the last application. I'm sorry. Did anybody have any public comment on, on St. Savior's? Please raise your hand. I'm so sorry. No. Okay. So on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um, everybody's seen a draft of it. The idea is that we don't move the needle in, uh, the amount of affordable housing we have in Greenwich as much as we'd like because of the high cost of land. As a result, we have proposed in the past for the first time in 1988 to form a trust fund that would push forward, that would subsidize housing that is affordable in town. And in 1988, it went to the RTM and they did not act. We're hoping that it will be acted upon this time. This is a recommendation coming from the Plan of Conservation and Development as well as the Affordable Housing Task Force that was formed subsequently. I don't know what else I should add about that. It will be funded by private donations only. It will have a board of trustees with 11 members, two of whom are from the BET, two from the RTM, two from the general public, one from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the head, uh, the head of the Department of Human Services and the town planner. I think I got, oh, and two affordable housing residents. I can't think of anything else that's super relevant to the application at this time. Did you guys have any questions or comments? Oh, quickly.
The affordability plan, um, the requirement of that.
Oh, and we, you can only spend, the trust will only be able to make expenditure decisions based on the town's approvable affordable housing plan, which we must file with a state by Ju, by June of next year. Uh, the draft that you all saw over the weekend has had three typos removed from it. And we have strengthened the, I had to strengthen the conflict of interest language again, uh, to clarify that somebody who lives in affordable housing could not be seated on an expenditure decision in the property in which they are living. And, uh, we also did the appointments, uh, the appointments committee gave us very specific language from the code of ordinances that they wanted put into how the members are nominated. And that's about it. I think, uh, there's an expenditure level at which it goes to the RTM for approval, uh, which is $500,000. Uh, we've debated that a lot, and that's probably the biggest question right now is, does it, do we really want to keep it at that level? Or would we want to have the trustees have sole responsibility? So if, do you guys have any more questions or comment? No. Um, does anybody from the public wish to speak on behalf of the trust or against the trust? No members from the public wish to speak. Okay. So, um, with that, Katie, tell me again what the action the commission needs to take on this would be.
Well, the, the process to get this before the RTM would have to start with the board of selectmen, who would then refer it to the, um, RTM. So what you would, what you would want to do is, um, recommend that the board of selectmen take this up and that they then, of course, uh, refer it to the RTM, um, and then approval from the RTM.
And that would be a motion?
Yes.
And so is there someone?
To recommend.
Margaret, Margaret, we can, I, I was just looking at this and this, we can correct some like, some word, do a little bit of word, not substantive, but like, uh, wordsmithing on this bill.
Yeah, you, we could correct things that are not substantive. Yes.
Great.
And in fact, if you're interested, Victoria, there's a drafting team for it. It's all lawyers. Bob Baralek is on it. Peter, uh, Peter, um, John Tessie, Bill Finger, Aldo, Aldo Caparella.
Pas, Pasquale.
Pasquarella. And who am I missing, Bob? I'm just.
Kip.
And Kip Bergweger, who is the Chair of Legislative and Rules. And I'll, so if you would like to join us, um, they have, a lot of the wording is from them. The other thing is if I could ask you to take a look at the Stanford wording because we have heavily plagiarized from Stanford.
There were just a couple of things that, that I noticed, not.
Okay, great. Yeah, we can make changes. Uh, I did remove a couple of typos in the version you got today.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So with that, yeah, so we can make minor changes afterwards, right, Katie?
Yes.
Okey dokey. So if we could have a motion, it's weird talking about something like that.
Right. This is for, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission's Affordable Housing Task Force. As a discussion and recommendation, uh, to the Board of Selection, uh, Board of Selectmen to refer the, uh, affordable housing has for.
Trust fund.
Affordable Housing Task Force Trust.
Trust fund.
To the RTM for review and approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Mr. Baralek has seconded.
Good.
Uh, Mr. Lowe, how do you vote? Okay, that looked like an I.
I was muted. Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
And Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Can I vote on this, Katie? Yes, right?
Yes.
And I'm also I. And Victoria, we didn't have you seated because we started before you joined.
Oh, you didn't. You just didn't let me in before I turned on my computer, but that's fine.
Oh, okay. We didn't, um.
That's fine. That's fine.
We didn't see you on the list. Okey dokey. Um, so now.
Oh, you were probably looking at my laptop and not my, uh, town computer.
Okay. Um, so Mr. LaRoe, who's seated from here on in?
Uh, I believe it would be Mr. Baralek and, uh, Ms. Goss.
Okey dokey. So, um, thank you very much for your service, Mr. Lowe.
Okay. Uh, see ya.
Okey dokey. The next application is number two, the Stein Raisin Sides REV Trust for a Final Coastal Site Plan at 196 Shore Road in the R20. Who will be speaking for the applicant?
Uh, it would be Mr. John Hegney, um, Mr.
And he's got his hand up.
Mr. Sides would also like to be present as well.
Okay. Um, do you see where he is?
I, I see Mr. Sides. The other person would be, uh, Len DeAndrea. I'm assuming it's DeAndrea's office, but.
That would be a good assumption to make.
Okay, I've got, I've got Mr. DeAndrea, whichever DeAndrea we're getting.
Oh.
And.
No, no, not that. Sorry, I think I might have.
Yeah, you just brought in GCTV.
Yeah, okay. We'll move him then.
All right.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, members of the commission. Uh, John Hegney for the applicant Stein Sides. Her and her family are, are joining us this evening. Uh, they got all of the, uh, family members, uh, out for the Zoom. Uh, we are also joined by our engineer, Len DeAndrea. We are looking to build a, an approximately 3,000 square foot new home and pool at 196 Shore Road. Uh, the property that we're, uh, developing is, is very, very unique. Uh, is, uh, an original property designed by the, uh, Lucas Point subdivision from 1926. It features a cul-de-sac which we share driveway with 194, which fronts on Shore Road, uh, 196, which we're developing, and 198 Shore Road, uh, which you saw, uh, last year, uh, for our coastal site plan. Because this property was developed prior to the adoption of zoning, uh, we are preserving some zoning legal non-conformities as part of our development plan here. Uh, in addition to that, we did meet with the zoning board of appeals back in December. They saw fit to grant us a front yard setback variance, uh, to locate the house in roughly the same location, uh, that it occupies currently. Uh, the neighborhood did develop around this house, uh, so we do feel that's the optimal location for it. Uh, if you go to the site, you'll see that, uh, the surrounding properties on Shore Road and on East Point Lane all have decks that view the water, uh, surrounding this area that work around where we're building this new home. Pat, we did put together, uh, some presentation slides that I'd like to just quickly go over with the commission. Uh, just to give you an idea of, of, of what we've been doing in order to, to meet with you. Um, uh, we did, uh, have a, a long discussion with the Department of Public Works, uh, regarding this project in Alita. As you can see on the existing condition survey that, uh, uh, Pat is putting up for us here. Uh, there is a town drain line that runs along the north portion of this property. Uh, that, uh, serves the town from Shore Road and then outfalls into the Long Island Sound. Uh, our project has nothing to do with this line. Uh, uh, it cuts through our property. Uh, we've been speaking with Public Works about granting them a right to drain so that they can maintain, uh, this benefit to the town. Um, uh, we've offered and, uh, you can see, uh, on our next slide, which was the development plan, uh, to relocate it. But, uh, in our discussions with the town engineer, uh, he determined that it might not be necessary and that we can, uh, leave the existing pipe as it is. Uh, because the existing conditions are suitable for, uh, the town's drainage needs. If you look at the, uh, the bottom of this page here, you'll see an alternative drain line that also exists. Runs on the common property line, uh, between 196 and 198 Shore Road. Uh, as part of our discussions with Public Works, uh, our clients have offered, uh, to grant an easement to the town that would straddle that common property line, uh, to provide further drainage benefit for Shore Road. Uh, these are things that are, are outside of, uh, the requirements that we need to meet in, in order to, uh, satisfy the coastal site plan requirements. I do want to give, uh, the commission a flavor of how hard our, our clients have worked, uh, to accommodate the town and be good residents. Um, in addition to exploring that, you know, uh, the DeAndreas have put together, uh, a drainage plan, uh, for this property that would satisfy the drainage manual, uh, on its own. I, I realize that, uh, we have outstanding comments from the conservation, uh, staff. We've tried hard to meet with them, uh, over the last, uh, few weeks and have been unable to do so. Uh, one of the things we'd be asking the commission to consider this evening is granting us an approval for our coastal site plan, subject to, uh, review and approval by the conservation staff at a later time. Uh, or as part of the zoning permit sign-off process. Uh, we're working with a very experienced landscape architects, uh, out of West Stout's office, uh, Corey Jorgensen has put together a number of, of items, uh, that, uh, we believe will convince the conservation staff to support this project. Uh, we can certainly, uh, add trees, uh, and expand, uh, the coastal buffer plantings. I, I do want to, uh, note though, that, uh, the original plan didn't call for these because of, of the challenge of developing the site. Uh, you can see on the landscaping plan here, uh, the existing driveway, uh, cuts through the property at 194 before it comes on to our property and then goes on to 198. Uh, the, what serves as our rear accessway is currently filled with lawn. Uh, something that we would use to, to provide, uh, the town with access for, uh, the drainage easement in the event that we're able to work something out with the property owners at 198. The southern 20 feet of the property that runs along, that is just south of the residence is subject to a private view easement that serves 194 Shore Road. Uh, that was something that, uh, the Lucas Point, uh, developers put in place back in the twenties. Uh, that prohibits us from putting structures in that area and limits our landscaping to three feet in height. So we're unable to put any, uh, trees there. Uh, we have had, uh, significant conversations with our neighbors on East Point Lane. Anytime you go to a, a zoning board of appeals hearing, you're going to want to speak with your neighbors, uh, to see if they have any comments on these projects. Um, uh, we want to make sure that what we're doing on our site, uh, doesn't affect the views. That's not to say that we can't find ways to, to, to address what conservation is looking for. And we can certainly, uh, look to install trees, uh, in the. And we can certainly, uh, look to install trees, uh, in the accessway, given that it's not, uh, currently paved. Uh, we just want to be, uh, cognizant of the fact that it is the area that Public Works would be looking to use in the event that the town drain, uh, is agreed to with the property owners at 198. Um, I have nothing further, Madam Chair, I, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, field any questions from the commission. I, I will say that, uh, uh, we've worked very hard to get to this point and, and we would hope that the commission would see fit to, uh, grant us an approval and allow us to work with conservation as part of the zoning permit sign-off process.
Questions or comments from the commission?
Uh, none here.
Anybody else? Wow. Okay.
I, I like to think that that's a sign that this project has been heavily vetted, you know?
So how do people feel about going forward with the concept of comments from the country of, of review, subsequent review from the Conservation Commission?
I was just wondering what applicant's reason is for, we don't usually do this, I was just wondering what the applicant's, uh, reason is.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would say that we've, uh, I've been at this for a long time, uh, uh, Ms. Goss. Uh, we, we did file this back in January, uh, with, uh, several other, uh, applications that, uh, have already come before you and, and received approval. Um, uh, our clients are eager to start, uh, construction activities. Uh, I, I think that any responsible applicant would not engage in any construction activities, uh, until receiving coastal site plan approval. Um, uh, we did, uh, make great efforts to, to try and meet with the conservation staff, uh, you know, uh, uh, as with anything, you deal with, uh, municipality, some things are in your control and some things are out of your control. Um, uh, that being said, I, I, I am very confident that, uh, uh, our, our landscape architects have put together some very strong ideas, uh, that the conservation staff will, will respond to. Uh, the zoning permit sign-off process is a double-edged sword. It's something that, uh, gives great control to the commission and, uh, can benefit an applicant, but you have to meet the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission gives you. Uh, if we were to, to get this approval subject to the conservation staff, we would be obligated to meet with them before we could move forward with our project. Uh, it's not something we would do lightly, it's something that I, I think in this situation, uh, we would be well-suited to do that, uh, because of the confidence that our landscape architects have provided.
What, what, uh, Margarita, what is the precedent here, uh, for this type of an arrangement?
We have done it before, um. I, the reason that what we were asking about yesterday is that we had two open issues, we didn't know that the easement situation was going to be resolved. And we were, we wanted to make sure that the buffer planning and the landscaping was consistent with the coastal area regulations. Uh, it seems that progress has been made on the easement of, I have not, I didn't receive anything on that today, did anybody else, did I miss an email in comment from DPW? I thought they were going to comment to us.
No, actually, it's in the, in their, uh, in engineering, uh, or staff engineering's, uh, comments. Um, they said that, uh, they're okay to continue work on this, uh, so.
I thought they were going to add to it today, did I misunderstand that at the briefing yesterday?
Uh, I didn't hear that, it didn't, so.
What, what, what was in the, uh, what was originally in the comments? Uh, I believe had said something about that they didn't want to delay the projects.
Right, if we'd had trouble, okay.
Right.
I, I thought they were going to come back to us again today, so the question is, we've done this in the past, um, it can turn into a bit of a difficult thing. I'd rather leave the final authority around the conservation issues with our staff rather than with conservation, Katie and Pat, is that all right with you guys?
Yeah, that makes, that makes it a lot easier from our end too, actually, to do it that way.
I just feel more comfortable that if you get into where you have some kind of trade-off, I'd rather have our staff make the final call just because they understand balancing the equation with all the different functions. Um, we had asked whether you provided enough and we got a satisfactory answer, I believe, from DPW, we were concerned about the, about the treatment of the stormwater that flows into your property. Um, but I believe DPW was sufficiently satisfied with it, and again, conservation's going to take another crack when they look at it, so I would do that. Uh, and other than that, the commission is comfortable with us proceeding with this application at this time, with making a decision?
Yes, actually, understanding that, from the presentation materials and the things that were have been supplied by the applicant, uh, in terms of landscape that's proposed.
Mm-hmm.
And understanding, uh, and looking at the, uh, current site conditions, uh, they actually, it seems that they are actually adding a lot more landscaping than what's actually out there, inclusive of the, uh, the buffer at the seawall. It seems that they've got, uh, you know, lawn right to the seawall, but in this case, they're actually adding a good amount of buffer right to it as well.
All right, um.
Uh, Madam Chair, I did speak to DPW about this project for the clarification and, and the answer is, at a minimum, the DPW expecting the right to drain, but, uh, the easement with 196 and 198 is obviously going to be complicated, so that is something that they're going to work forward on, but it doesn't need to be a condition of the decision.
Okay. All right, I think Mr. McRae was aware of that, uh, do I have any comments from the public? No comments from the public, okay, well, in that event, we may close this application uh, with, um, the conditions on it that we, what we discussed. And does anybody disagree with closing it, please raise your hand, again, uh.
Did you do public comment?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, and if, for people in the public, if you'd want to speak, there's a virtual hand, if you select that, you may, uh.
No, we asked and nobody raised their hand. Okay, so with that, um, if nobody, does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
No objection, in that event, the application is now closed, and Mr. McRae, if, um, you're ready to make a motion?
Yeah, let me just get my notes together. Okay, this is, uh, 196 Shore Road, application PLPZ 2021-042, Final Coastal Site Plan. Application is seeking approval to demolish an existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family residence in ground swimming pool, deck patio and related site improvements in the R20, uh, NCOZ zones, uh, for section 6111 of the BZR and sections 22A 90 to 22A 96 of the Connecticut general statutes. Um, whereas the, uh, subject property straddles the AE 13 and AE 15, excuse me, VE 15 flood zones. As direct front to John Law and Sound, uh, the applicant has opted to exercise section eight, uh, dash two of the Connecticut general statutes to main delete, uh, maintain the legally non-conforming FAR. The existing FAR is 3,296 square feet, whereas 2,490.15 square feet is the allowable maximum. Uh, commission finds that, uh, zoning issue comments on 4521 indicating the proposal meets the requirements of the building zone regulations and endorse the project for his own permit sign-off. Uh, zoning board of appeals granted a variance, um, dated 12/9/20 for front yard setback, uh, front yard setback, uh, 22.1 feet was requested, whereas 40 feet is the minimum for the R20 zone. Sewer division issue comments, uh, 47 indicating no issues to be addressed during P and Z commission review phase. Engineering issue comments, uh, 421 indicating outstanding engineering concerns can be addressed prior to zoning permit sign-off. Conservation issue comments, uh, dated 4521, any concerns with the proposed coastal buffer. DEEP issued comments dated 415, 21 indicating, uh, review of the proposal for consistency with Connecticut's Coastal Management Act policies and have no further comments for the commission. And wetlands issued, uh, permit needs questionnaire and 2121 indicating no permit required. Therefore, a motion to approve the final site, uh, final site plan with the following comments. Prior to zoning permit, uh, drainage easement through the properties at 196, 198 shore, something we presented to the Department of Public Works for review and approval. And prior to zoning building permit, the applicant should address and resolve any outstanding landscape issues with the planning and zoning commission staff. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second for that motion? Ms. Low, Ms. Low has seconded, um, and.
Ms. Goss.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, Goss. This is new, Peter, I didn't know about this.
I know, I, I tried to keep it quiet.
All I can do is laugh, is laugh and turn really beet red, that's all I can do, see that color? And when you're embarrassed and you're on Zoom, you know you're embarrassed. Um, okay, so Ms. Goss has, has seconded, and Mr. Barilak, how do you vote?
I.
Ms. Goss?
I.
Mr. Yesky?
I.
Mr. McRae? Before I call you Mrs. McRae, you better.
He's, he's, microphone's off, Nick, microphone's off.
Yeah, I.
And Albin is also I and the motion passes five, nothing, thank you very.
Thank you very much.
So sorry, thank you, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm going to try really hard not to goof anything else up. Uh, we are now opening the public hearing, uh, Mr. Bazili, are you all set?
Already.
Alrighty, uh, so with the public hearing, our first item is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Department for a zoning text amendment, uh, in the use regulations which will essentially, uh, create inclusionary zoning in Greenwich, which all multifamily housing in Greenwich would have a below-market-rate component in the future. With that, Ms. DeLuca, I turn the floor over to you and try to, you know, get everybody's gender right and whatever.
Oh, yes, this is a, a stumbling part of, of the meeting because post that, I'm also having difficulty creating my screen share, so Pat, unfortunately, just emailing him everything that I wanted to share, so he has everything, he's going to share it for me. Um, because what I wanted to do is go through the, um, text amendment for everybody, just because I, it's, it's, um, been a year in the making, as you all know, but the public might not be aware, that we, the process started about a year ago. Um, and the, uh, reason that we started a review of section 6110, which is titled Use Regulations and Special Requirements for Dwelling Units Permitted in the Business Zones, is that we have had regulations, um, along those lines, uh, that include below-market-rate housing um, since, since the eighties, and they've been moderately successful, so much so that in the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development, um, the charge was to make them more successful. That happened, um, in, in the form of a larger floor area to incentivize these below-market-rate units. The below-market-rate units, um, uh, to date, um, have been called moderate income units and they are based on an income limit determined by, um, the average town employee salary and they were directed towards town employees, um, so-called workforce housing. Um, the, and the reason that we established a moratorium, um, well over a year ago now, is that in the charge to make those regulations more attractive, um, they were quite successfully more attractive and we started getting, um, a lot of applications for moderate income, which is very positive. Um, but there is a complaint from the development community that they were onerous and that there's a lot of flexibility, but with that flexibility is not a lot of predictability. And further, that the incentives provided were too great at a point nine FAR and they were creating buildings that were too large for what the town was getting in return. So the commission said, let's study it, that started, um, with a moratorium in November of 2019, um, which was recently extended in February of this year for four months, and now we are presenting tonight, um, what we have been working on, on a multitude of meetings with many of you who I'm sure are on this Zoom tonight. Um, so I just would like to say publicly, thank you so much for joining those workshops. Um, as you know, it's been a tremendous effort on the behalf of the commission, um, the public at large, the development community, attorneys, architects, et cetera, so, uh, it's really a group effort, if you will. So with that, Pat, if you wouldn't mind sharing the actual regulation, I'm just going to kind of cruise through it um, and tell you, tell you how it's set up. Um, what you're looking at here is the regulation as it reads now, strike through indicates language that is to be deleted and bold is to be added, so what we've done here in this first section, um, is update the purpose statement. The relevant thing I want to point out in this section is that it is no longer just about workforce housing. Um, part of what the commission reviewed with the community is what we are doing with our below-market-rate housing. Um, so although workforce housing is important, uh, we also want affordable housing, um, and as we scroll down a little bit, Pat, if you could, um, you'll see that we've added a definition for affordable housing, um, which follows the section 830G of the Connecticut general statutes, um, which is effectively 80% of the median family income for this, uh, Stanford Norwalk Metropolitan Fair Market Rent Income Area, basically state median income. Um, and that, that's the way it follows, um, at the, in, in that section of the regulation, so we have a definition of affordable, if you keep going down a little bit, Pat. Affordable, we also added below-market rates because, as you'll see as we go through here, we have two options, one is for moderate income and one is for affordable, the two in combination have just been, um, combined to and, and so we can easily refer to them as the below-market-rate units. So what we've done, um, in the next section, um, is talk about, just go up one second, Pat, sorry, um, is in C where we talk about requirements for the dwelling units. So as, as Margarita mentioned, um, there, these are inclusionary zoning regulations and, um, if it's fair enough to say, um, Madam Chair, I don't think the commission will be taking action on this tonight, as we have our own, um, revisions that we like to make, obviously, we want to hear from the community at large on these proposals, so I don't believe there'll be any action. Um, one of the things that we talked about doing was actually changing the title to make it clear that this is, um, about inclusionary zoning. Um, it is different from the way we did inclusionary zoning in the past, in the past, you were required to do a moderate income unit when you used any of the incentives, now it is inclusionary once you go over a certain number of dwelling units. Um, that number is, um, five, once you get to, to five, so if you have below five, then this section here in C describes, um, you know, general provisions about dwelling units in business zones, things like you're not allowed to have, um, dwelling units on the first floor in the LBR2 in the CGBR zone. Um, talks about the desires for open space and adequate distance between, um, between buildings and also notes down there in F, that any development with five or more must have a below-market-rate component. Okay, um, Pat, if you could scroll down a little bit more, please. This next section refers in D refers to the incentives, so once you get over five, um, there is a, there is an inclusionary requirement, as we were just referring to, but because these are below-market rate, naturally, there's a, a form of subsidy, um, or offset that would be needed in order to induce the development community to, um, use this section and build these units. Um, and that has come in the form of floor area bonus, height bonus, um, and the number of stories, meaning you can build a little bit bigger with the idea being that you will be able to create either more market-rate units or larger market-rate units, whatever is what the developer finds appropriate in order to offset the cost of the below-market-rate units. Um, one, one thing to note is that in these previous section, you saw that CGBR, meaning effectively Greenwich Avenue and a little bit beyond, um, is permitted to have residential in the business zone, but if you'll see here in the first paragraph under D. is permitted to have residential in the business zone. But if you'll see here in the first paragraph under D, CGBR is no longer included. That is because you are not required to have this inclusionary zoning component, component within that zone. The reason for that is that that zone already offers a larger floor area for various reasons. And so the commission felt it was not appropriate to go beyond those incentives already offered in order to gain the, gain the below market rate units. So if you just scroll down a little bit, you'll see some of the things that are the incentives. Things like that, that we've already had in our existing regulations, Pat, if you want to keep scrolling down a little bit, please. And about coverage and rear setback standards. That's number two. Number three is an existing, existing incentive about the allowing, allowing a driveway from a, from a business development across the street from a residential development. And then what you see here in five is, and is table one. And as you'll see in five, table one refers to things one can do in the GB, which is general business, GBO, general business office, and CGB, central Greenwich business. And GB and GBO are effectively larger lots along the Post Road, just to generalize, and CGB is just outside of the downtown CGBR zone, meaning Greenwich Avenue of downtown. So this, this section notes that if you have four or fewer units, you're there, if you, if you would like to use the incentive of a point six floor area, a little bit of height and a little bit of stories, you can do so and in, in order, and, and in exchange for that, you are required to provide one unit of moderate income dwelling units. So moderate income is, is MID. That's what you, you see under the type of, of unit required. The moderate income dwelling unit is, as I mentioned before, that's based on the average town employee salary. That's around ninety-nine thousand, which is quite significantly different from the affordable housing unit salary, which is around fifty-six thousand. The next line there, ten or fewer. Under that scenario, you can have a point seven five floor area, a little bit more height and, and an additional story. And in that scenario, if you want to, to go up to the point seven five, you have to provide one unit of affordable housing. Now, the reason it doesn't say between five and ten is that you have the option to do, let's say, four units under that second line there at a point seven five FAR. But if you're going to pursue that option, you still have to provide one unit of affordable housing as opposed to in the first line where it's one unit of, of moderate income. So the third row down or fourth, if you, if you exclude the header. Now, this does say between eleven and twenty-four. So between eleven and twenty-four units, then fifteen percent of the total number of units, you have an affordable housing requirement. And the, you get point seven five, you get that as a right. And then an additional thousand square feet per affordable housing unit. And, and of course, the extra height in the stories. Pat, if you could scroll down just a little bit, please. Um, so you can see A, B, and C, or just go up a little bit more. What you'll see in A, B, and C here is an explanation of what these rows are referring to. So it gives an example in the example of the between eleven and twenty-four units in C, I'll just hit that one up. And so if you had a twenty-unit building, you would have seventeen market rate units and three or fifteen percent of the twenty units must be offered as affordable housing units. The allowable floor area for the total building, regardless of use, in other words, it could be all residential or it could be a mixed-use building. But regardless, the building, it can be a point seven five FAR plus an additional, in this case, three thousand square feet of floor area, and that three thousand comes from the, the three affordable housing units at the offer of a thousand square feet per unit. Those, that additional square footage can be used anywhere in the building, meaning it could be used for the market rate units, or it could be used for the below market rate units, whatever the developer found appropriate. It cannot be added to the floor area of commercial, meaning you are capped at the, the underlying zone offerings for commercial. And actually, if you, if you look up just a little bit at the top of the page and, and under number four there, that's the section. That's the language there. It says in the development comprising a residential use and a non-residential use here, and after referred to as mixed use, the floor area devoted to the non-residential use shall not exceed the parameters established in section six dash two oh five and any other applicable sections of these regulations. And then the last option, Pat, if you, yep, thank you. The last option there is twenty-five units or more. When you have that scenario, twenty, twenty percent of the total number of units are at a effectively a fifty-fifty split between the moderate income and the affordable. If you have an odd number, you can opt to do more moderate income than affordable housing. It's the same scenario where you, where you have the point seven five plus the additional thousand square feet per the below market rate unit. In both the third and fourth option, you are capped at a point nine FAR and the height of forty-seven and a half feet and four stories. Uh, the other thing that is noted here is in E below, Pat, if you could go down a little bit, please. If you, if one opts to use the fourth story here, you have to step that fourth story back such that it shall not exceed seventy percent of the floor area of the third story. And the exterior walls of the fourth story should be stepped back from all street facades by a quarter foot for each foot of the building height excluding the parapets. Um, and I do, I have some visuals for that, but I think it's going to be easier instead of flipping back and forth between the, the screen shares here. If I just finish the rest of the regulation at the end, I come back and show you what, what we're talking about there and what that looks like. So just carrying on, Pat, if you could scroll down a little bit. Table two refers to zoning regulations for the LBR two and LB zones. As you heard me mention before, the, the, there's already some revisions that I think we want to make, one of which would be to include the waterfront business zone in this section and, and potentially also the RMF, the residential multifamily. In other words, every zone in which multifamily dwelling units are permitted would now have a inclusionary zoning requirement. So other than the CGBR, that would be the only zone that doesn't have it. So what you have here is a similar concept. Four or fewer units, you can opt to use the point six FAR, or you can just opt to use the underlying zoning. If you use the underlying zoning, you don't have to do any affordable housing. But if you want to use these incentives here, then you have to off, then you have to give one unit is moderate income. And conversely, five units or more is fifteen percent of the total units, and those are also at moderate income. The LBR two zone and the LB zones are the neighborhood zones and some, and the villages along the Post Road for the most part. And those are also where we have our neighborhood schools in proximity to there. So it made more sense to do moderate income dwelling units as opposed to affordable housing. Also, the lots tend to be a little smaller and therefore harder to offset the cost of these below market rate units. Part of the discussions with the community noted that there are some LBR two zones such as Chickahominy where the lot sizes are quite small, such that these regulations don't really work. And that's in, in those areas without, without purchasing many lots and consolidating them in order to do a larger size development, which would really change the look and feel of that area beyond what I think was contemplated in these regulations. And as such, the commission discussed taking up some sort of village district or something that was specific for those areas that would be specific to smaller lot zones or areas within the LBR two zone. So I just, I just note that. I'm scrolling down a little bit, please, Pat. And E, we have the parking requirements. For those who develop in town, you know that if you have a multifamily and mixed use, mixed use development, that you have a significantly reduced parking requirement. There is no change to that. As you'll see in, in three here, which is what's shown at the top of the page. If you are doing just a straight development with residential only that includes below market rate units, you follow what you're seeing here. One parking space per bedroom, one point two five for two bedrooms and one point five for three or more bedrooms. And that is less than what is required ordinarily under section six dash one fifty-five, with the idea being that it, that the, obviously, if you want to do more, you can, whatever, if the developer thinks that that's more appropriate for the market conditions. And then four is existing language about requiring bicycle racks. And then in F here, the, this section is titled general requirements for developments, including below market rate units. So those that have this component, there's a whole list of things here. One is, um, one is that you cannot own other real estate in, in, in the town if you want to be, if you want to apply for one of these units. Also, that, that these regulations are referring to a box that can be created and how many units you can fit in that box is up to you. That's number one. Other things here is that, uh, things that we already, we already do when we, when we use our moderate income regulations now about the construction quality and they have to be dispersed throughout the development and that they're constructed in such a way where you don't just build all the market rate and you'll get to building the affordable housing down the road. No, they all have to be done on a pro rata basis. Also, um, as you scroll down a little bit, please, Pat, you'll see here about how subleasing works and about how the annual affidavit have, has to be filed by the administrator of each of these developments. So first of all, an administrator has to be assigned for the development. Uh, and they have to note that on an annual basis, the tenants of these below market rate units are in fact still compliant with the income requirements. And then going down to G, this refers to when a site plan is required versus when a special permit is required. Effectively, a smaller building that does not include below market rate and is of a, a sigh is below the thresholds determined in section six dash one oh one. It's just a straight site plan that goes to the commission as it gets larger and with more units. That's a special permit. It talks about the requirement in, oh, can you scroll down, please, Pat? Requirement in number three here for a declaration of restrictions, it has to be filed noting how these, noting that the restriction period for the below market rate units is forty years. You'll see that a little bit later on. It is not in perpetuity. And further that an affordability plan is required that establishes the administrator and talks about how the, the units can be rented out and what the limits thereof are. Scrolling down several pages, Pat, if you can get to H. What you'll see here again is just the strike through, as you see Pat scrolling through here. And then we get to H. This is, a lot of this is existing language. Guidelines for maximum rent and sales price. The thing to note here is that we have added a new sales price for the studio apartments in previous regulations that was excluded. Um, and we've now included that as an option. However, we have given, we've adjusted how you calculate the, the rent for the studio because what had happened in the past was there had been a studio that was offered at the same rent as a one-bedroom, which became problematic and, and that they, no one wanted to rent them. So that sort of became moot. Um, and going down, there, B talks about affordable housing units, and that's newly defined, scrolling down, Pat. That's newly defined. So it just talks about how the rent is calculated. Effectively, it follows the state statutes as it does for sales price too. And scrolling down, it's, um, I, nothing, nothing that I think needs to be really noted, other than just, again, speaking about the fact that we have an affordability component now as opposed to just the, the moderate income, affordable housing. So, um, again, just at the la, at the last page there, it talks about the restriction period being, being forty years. So Pat, if you could get rid of that now, I hope, I hope everyone was able to follow that. I think another reason that we want to hold this open is so that you can digest everything I just said. If you were able to absorb even half of it, kudos to you because it is quite complicated. And, um, you know, I think since we've been so involved in this for such a long period of time, it's, you know, second nature to us at this point, but it's, it'd be, I'm looking forward to hearing people's comments on it. But Pat, if you could go to the PowerPoint that shows the, thank you. So as, as you heard me talk about before, um, there's, in, in the instance where you are adding the extra story, this is mostly relevant in the GB, GBO and CGB zones. So if you have that fourth story, it can be no more than seventy percent of the floor below and it has to be stepped back. So this is, this is what that would, would look like. The idea being that we want to add some relief to the massing. Further, if you recall, I had noted that the commission has the option, a qualified option to waive the coverage and also the rear setbacks. The idea being that streetscape is of extreme importance to the community as a whole and to the, to the commission. And buffering these larger buildings from the neighbors with landscaping is also extremely important. So the idea being that if you can, can give a little bit of relief on the setbacks to have these larger buildings, that can be accomplished as long as you can show that you have a measurable amount of landscaping. That's, that's the qualifier that I was referring to. Pat, if you can go to the next slide, please. Um, here, you'll, you'll see an example where you have a base zone of three stories on the left-hand side with a maximum of forty feet in height. And if you look on the right-hand side, you'll see that the, how that works with the, um, with the the, the, the quarter foot step back per foot of height. So if you had a forty-seven and a half, then you're, you're going, you're going just under, just under twelve feet back of you, um, from the, from the edge of the building there. And you can see, see what that looks like up at the top. So those, that's, that's the proposal in a nutshell, if I dare call it a nutshell. And you can stop sharing, Pat. Thank you. So with that, I would just say thank you so much again for everyone's participation. And I know that we are not at the end of the road yet. But we are obviously a lot closer than we've been over, we've, the closest we've been over the last year. So thank you. Oh, you muted.
Yes, and the colleagues are quiet. So that probably is a whole lot of information for people to digest. The draft is available on the website of the commission talked a lot about this. How long have we been working on this? I don't know if anybody has additional comments. I, I know Peter Lowe had found some, some comments on the draft. There were some changes we wanted to make about the other zones. And so does anybody have any additional comments on the commission? Other than that we're ready to work on something else? Well, okay. So does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? If you wish to comment, please raise your virtual hand. Mr. Pescarella. Who I, there you go.
Hi.
Hello.
Yeah, I just want to say before the moratorium, we had put forward a proposal to do a multifamily project on some property that we own in Pemberwick. And I'm still trying to digest just how these changes, these post-moratorium changes would affect our ability to move forward with that project.
Probably the best thing to do, yeah, probably the best thing to do would be to talk to staff about that, to work directly with Katie offline about it. That would, yeah, I think that's the best thing.
And although, if I may, when you and I were discussing that briefly, I was just trying to explain the changes between what you had proposed versus this regulation, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean, that would be if you came in with something new. So let's talk, as Madam Chair said, let's talk offline. So let's talk, as Madam Chair said, let's talk offline about the specifics of your.
Because you you kind of mess up, you mess up the commission if you start talking about what will become an application, so it's better to keep it. In a dark room until, you know, till it's ready.
But but let me just then make a more general comment. For really everyone whose property is affected by this pre and post-moratorium. And I guess that would be, you know, to try to understand from a cost benefit analysis perspective. To put some numbers on this. Because, you know, I I know that the the goal here is to increase diversity of housing options and to encourage. You know, more. More mixed use and and apartment buildings and with affordable component. As well, but as we know, the economics of those projects don't always work, so. I will certainly circle up with Katie and the staff. On our specific project to try to understand how these changes change the economics of that, but. I wonder if there's some way to get a sense of how this changes. The economics of the existing parcels. That may be candidates for projects. In terms of whether it makes them more economically viable, less economically viable. And to what degree? Just so we understand the impact of the rule.
Well, I'll tell you this, Munch, and I know I've said this to you before, but I'll just, you're probably prompting me to say it for the record. We got a lot of input along the way from the developer community until and a lot of. Out and out rejection of all the drafts we did until we got to here. And we got to hear developers, as you heard some of them say, when you've joined us, believe that it works for them. In addition, we reached out to other towns. That have inclusionary zoning and we asked them about issues they'd had with their inclusionary zoning. And we also talked to. In the process of doing this, two different commercial real estate appraisers. Who helped us with what kind of incentives we might want to use that would. Make it attractive for builders to propose inclusionary zoning. So it is our hope that it will work based on all the input we got. And I guess that's what you were looking for me, I mean, I know you've heard me say it before, so. I I think you were looking for me to put it on the record, but that is our hope. And it took a while to craft something because we do have high real estate values. Katie, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think I think you're you're right that that was naturally a significant concern. That that we create something that was usable, having said that. As I noted in the beginning, it was complaints from the development community and from the public. That the, you know, that it just was not working, that the buildings were too large for what we were getting. So I think the commission felt the, you know, had that same feeling also. And to that end, I think when any commission puts forth a regulation, obviously. You know, you put it out there and people will either use it or they won't. But when they, you have to put something out there that you're comfortable with. So if, you know, if if the point seven five is the limit, then and the forty feet of height or forty seven and a half in this instance, then that's the limit. So. You know, these are, these are big buildings and I think as as has been noted. There was a lot of input as to whether or not this is going to be viable and it seems. From the group that we've been working with that that this does work. Obviously, that's not going to work in every scenario, but you don't, you don't create a regulation that fits absolutely every lot you created that that. You could have conformity within a zone.
Right, well, and I and I guess I honestly wasn't looking to. Ask you to put anything on the record, Marguerite, per se, I, but I should say that I've I've observed. How hard you and Katie have been working on this with with everybody else, and so. I do see that you have tried to balance all of the interests. I just, what I question is if there's really been a quantitative analysis of the rule. In the way that, you know, on a federal level, the Office of Management Budget does it, for example. A sort of neutral analysis of what the numbers really are. And obviously, it's heartening to hear that some of the developers that you've spoken with. Feel that in terms of the range of options. You know, this combination of factors is one that is perhaps palatable to them, but as you.
Oh, although you disappeared. Although you just went silent, he's gone.
May opportunity, Madam Chair, to just make a quick note. Talking before about the the trust, it's and within the trust, how. You, there will be an affordable affordability plan that that comes out at least by next June. The trust definitions are broad. For that reason, that you will specify it in the affordability plan, but as such, I've noticed that the definite. In order to have them be relatively coincident, I noticed that I changed at the last minute without thinking. That it's eighty percent of the of the area median income in our definition in in six one ten and it really should be of the state. Because there's quite, there's a thirty thousand. Dollar difference in annual income and we want to be coincident with this with the. Eight thirty G meeting the state, so I need to change that language at least, it's eighty percent of the state median income, not of the area median income as it reads now. So that's another.
Needs to be made. And with the trust, we're doing an eighty percent of area or below because once something, and this is probably a little too techie for. Most folks, but once you assist a project and I've been looking at how all the. The Fed and state definitions of assisted, it counts for the state. Affordable housing if we care about counting, thank you, Bob Barilak for that, he that was. He's made several amazing contributions and that's one of them, so. Okay, we still don't have Aldo back. Oh, there he is, he's back. Does anybody else want to speak since Aldo had had a chance? I'm gonna wait a second before I recognize.
Could I respond?
Yes, of course.
If Aldo is there, I don't see him on my screen, is he?
He's back in and but there's someone else who wants to speak and Aldo just dropped back out, oh, there he is. Okay, so I moved him forward.
I I would say obviously to what Aldo said, that we are not the O M B. And that you are probably in the best position to determine. Whether or not this is something that works for you by putting in your own numbers, if if it doesn't. And you have a specific issue, I think we would encourage you to bring it to our attention.
Yeah.
And just and just to just to follow on with that comment that Mr. Lowe made. I I found it highly instructive, the. The few sessions that I spent with some very cooperative developer members of the community. Educating me so that I could help sort of share with the commission. Some of the 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 economic constraints that the development projects today are under and. I I think it would be extremely helpful if if Aldo or any other person with development experience would. Look at these and try to run some scenarios, real life scenarios with real live numbers in them. And share them with us so that we can make sure that these these rules work.
That would be great, thank you so much, I appreciate.
We did, in all honesty, we did run them, we we did run the application against some existing, some past applications. And both Dave Hardman, who is away tonight and Barilak. Played with different property sizes and what would be feasible, but that's not something the commission normally does, so what to Peter Lowe. And Bob Barilak just said. The developer should take a quick scan and see if they think it's going to work for them, see if they have any thoughts. Our next hand raised is Al Shahadi. And if you would go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, sorry, my camera's not working, so you can hear me and not see me. My name's Al Shahadi, I am the Chair of the Land Use Committee for the Byron Neighborhood Association. I'm an almost lifelong resident of Byron. And professionally, I've spent about thirty years in affordable housing, community development and community development finance, so I can bring a. Number of perspectives to this conversation. Because this regulation came out really quickly and only I've only had time to talk to a couple of people on the land use committee. My remarks tonight are as a private individual, the Byron Neighborhood Association may or may not take a formal position on this. But I felt I'd step up and speak out.
Please do.
A bunch of different reactions, first, I'll just start on the positive side, some initial positives, I think it makes a whole lot of sense to include. Affordable housing in with the general below market. Particularly with eight thirty G staring us down. The barrel, if you will, having set asides greater than ten percent also makes a lot of sense. I actually think that the base set aside should be more than ten percent. I'm sure you all have wrestled with the cruel math of every time you have a project that has ten percent affordable. Units, you are increasing the denominator. At the same rate that you're increasing the numerator, leaving the town standing still. So I have not been privy to the. Conversations about what what works financially, but might encourage you to increase that bottom one to fifteen percent. Just so every project provides incremental progress toward getting us out from under eight thirty G.
But Mr. Shahadi, you know, people say that to me a lot. And okay, somebody can correct me, but since the numerator is smaller than the denominator. When you add one unit to the numerator. You are still making it bigger as a percentage of the denominator because the denominator is smaller, is bigger.
No, because you are taking the same. Amount and you're adding, if you're adding ten percent to the new, you're not changing.
Adding ten percent, you're adding a unit, so if you have a hundred units. Of of affordable and you add one unit, that hundred and one is a bigger piece. Than it was of twenty three thousand. Do you see what I mean? You're not adding a percent, you're not doing a multiplier effect on the numerator and the denominator. You are adding an absolute unit to the numerator and an absolute unit to the denominator. And since the numerator is smaller, it actually does grow. This thing gets said to me a lot, it was the only thing that I ever got right in fifth grade, I think, or wherever we did fractions.
I'm happy to let this.
A mathematician can correct me, but we do, however, Mr. Shahadi, point well taken. We wrestled, we really wanted to be like Darian, who is doing twelve percent. And they just announced that they're about to go to fourteen and we tried. Our land values are such that we got pushed back from the developer, so we're going to move out with ten. And we would really, if this works, we would love to increase the percent. So as you point out, we're just moving because there's a social welfare. Component to this, which is that we get more diversity and the more units we can get that are below market, the better our off our town is. So from just that point of view, we'd like to have a higher percent, but the developers didn't think we could pull it off, so. We're starting out with what everybody has consensus on, okay, sorry, I went into my arithmetic thing and go ahead.
No, well, at another point, we'll discuss arithmetic, but in any case. The last point on the positives, I think scaling the incentives, the density bonus to the percentage of below market units. Also makes a lot of sense that you're offering an offset for the loss of income. With the greater percentage of non-market rating, non-market rate units, so I think all of those make sense. A bunch of concerns, some of which are just concerns, some of which may border on objections. The first is more an educational one. For those of us that aren't fully engrossed in the building code, the zoning code of the town of Greenwich. It is an opaque document. And it is very hard for me to get a sense of what the added bonus really means in terms of two buildings side to side. So it would be helpful to, at least me as an individual, and I've got to believe other people in the general public. If the tables that you have showing what the density bonus is, start with the as of right. What is in that district, that zone? What a developer can do, forgetting about affordable housing, would really help. Me and others get a handle on really what is the physical impact.
Okay, great suggestion, yeah, because otherwise you have to thumb back and forth, great suggestion. In fact, it's how I have explained it to people when I've taken those little tables and I've penciled in the as of right. It's a little tricky, what we could do, Katie, is rather than have the tables have it. There could be a piece at the end that has the whole thing laid out.
Yeah, whatever, just so they.
So we combine six two oh five in the tables, but you're gonna have to go all the way across the page to do that.
I just started making my own table last night. Mr. Shahadi, I can't agree with you more because I just make my own tables and and I'm an attorney too and. I've just started making my own tables to help me read this.
Right.
So that's a great comment, so that wasn't bordering on bordering on objection because we can fix that.
No. The second comment was, there's a disconnect between the, I'll call it, the tenure of the additional density and the tenure of the affordability. From my perspective, as somebody who represents a relatively dense part of the town where this might apply. The additional density allowed by this is permanent, it is forever. It, the building does not shrink at forty years. And so to me, both because I don't think any of either, any of the reasons that we're putting affordable housing in Greenwich, whether it is eight thirty G being forced on us. Or those of us who maybe are a little more broad minded, grew up here and were here when the community was much more economically diverse. I would say that the economic diversity that's brought by this should be for the same tenure as the building, which is permanent until it's.
Mr. Shahadi, we're, I'm laughing with you and with Katie right now. Because you missed a knock down, drag out argument last Thursday between.
Last Thursday.
Where were you last Thursday between deed restricted and forty years? And it was, we just, we, there was a, how long did that debate last?
Too long, too long.
And I have a slightly different perspective, I mean, I have done affordable housing and my first job thirty something years ago in this area was syndicating low income housing tax credits and. As a young man in my thirties, a thirty year deed restriction felt like forever. And you don't get to see how much gray hair gray hair I have, but there is housing. That is no longer part of the affordability stock and thirty years, forty years passes quickly. And it will be, we'll be all back at the table, at least our children will be all back at the table, trying to figure out to have, how to figure out the math. With some of those units coming out of affordability.
So it's exactly what Katie's argument was in the hour and a half long debate. We are happy to debate this question again, there were, there were strong, strong opinions on both sides. The developers, some of the developers felt that it was knowing that there was a residual value at the end of the forty years that you could go to market that made it. More worthwhile for them and that made the regulation more attractive, I'm neutral. I'm, I I see both arguments, I really do, but they were strong opinions, we are happy to keep discussing that, we. We were laughing actually quite hard because it was very heated, so we're happy to entertain that, totally see your point. And Katie definitely sees your point, if she sent you five dollars, you're not allowed to be bribed by the town planner.
I was just gonna say for the record, Mr. Shahadi, and I have not discussed this ever before, but I was. Thrilled to hear you say this because I was the lone soldier last week and I I feel very strongly in agreement with you. About 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 this issue.
And and as the as the as the pugilist on the other side, I have a very strong contrary view. And Mr. Shahadi, I too have a long career in affordable housing that I've been. You may ruin the day that you mentioned that because you may get pulled into some observatory.
Yeah, you never should have told us and you're gonna have to start coming to our affordable housing task force meetings now.
We'll hold that off for another conversation. An issue that did not, I did not see, that is a concern. At least the folks in Byron, I did not hear, see anything about maximum lot size, combining lots into a single property. And one of the things that we value very much in our end of town is the village feel. And I know there are some additional overlays, whether it's a historic district or a village overlay. But it really makes me nervous that somebody could come in, there is no maximum, and I I know this is town wide and whatever. But that somebody could come buy up five buildings in a row on Development Avenue. Knock them all down and build a monstrosity and change the village character. And I don't know how you address it, other than just say, that's a concern that I flagged and did not see.
Thought I copied you on this email, so I'm gonna share it with everybody. Lucy von Brockel, who I'm not seeing here tonight. Who is in the Byron Neighborhood Association, is also the Secretary of the RTM's Land Use Committee, for those of you who don't know her. She wrote Katie and the commission and asked some of. She wrote Katie and the Commission and asked some of these questions. What we are thinking and we are proposing, I'm just saying it out loud now to Byram is that. You, we begin to think about doing a village district in Byram. Or um, something called, I always forget what it's called, a planned development, some planned development, something. Um, I sent some material to all of you in Byram on it. And the idea would be that specifically for Byram and potentially down the road for Ben Pemberwick. We would look at what is happening with massing because of your small lot sizes. So. We didn't know how to address it in the regu-, we didn't think it was a good idea to address it in the regulations. So we began talking about. How do we protect Byram's character and the as-built nature? One protection that is built into the regulation is that you have FAR ceilings. And in the business district in the LBR two, you are limited to a point seven five FAR. So you would, no matter, even if you're combining lots. You're not going to the kind of massing that you would have in the central Greenwich Business District. And we very consciously said where we want the density. Would be closer to Central Greenwich and not in the villages. We want to protect the villages from getting really big buildings. That's how we were thinking about it. But again, we're open to this, um, open to keep talking about it. Um, we worked a lot with a couple of developers in Byram. Um, and also with people who are architects and have worked in Byram. But again, happy to hear your input. Um, you did get, so, so, but we'd like to move forward with. That idea of how do we protect Byram as in terms of its, of its scale.
Sure. So um, that's, I'm definitely willing to um, participate in that conversation and welcome the suggestions.
Now that said, Mr. Shahadi, um, an eight thirty G can come in tomorrow. And it can be seventy stories high and it is what it is. But the town is going to try to have regulations that protect the character. Okay, go ahead.
Um, next issue is Byram has two zones that are covered by these regulations, the LBR and the GB. And we're very nervous about the inclusion of the GB in at least the Byram GB. It is not what you described in terms of a large open lot along the post road, et cetera. It is a former manufacturing facility along the railroad tracks that has two awkward drive-ins. To probably the two most traffic snarled roads in our area. And I, the, the um, nightmare scenario, and that's a large lot of somebody putting a massive project in there. That then has, um, you know, uh, extra density because of these bonuses. Um, would cause real problems for the community. So I don't know how to address that, but I want to flag that, that. Probably unlike other areas where you define a village in the town, we have both village and industry in a similar area.
And I saw, I saw that in the communication that Lucy sent to the commission. Um, uh, Katie, do you have any comments in that? Because I commented on the LBR two, but I wasn't thinking about the, the GB.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I can say is that, um, even though the point seven five. Um, it, well, I guess it would be point nine would be the, would be the most, but. Uh, but between point seven five and point nine, um, is not necessarily, well, I guess there is with the thousand square feet. Sorry, I'm just thinking out loud. I shouldn't do that. I should.
You don't need, you don't need to feel like you have to respond to every one of my comments. This is the flag of an issue. That we have this odd hidden property that only long climbers and whatever know about. That um, could be a flying the ointment for the way this is constructed.
Yeah, I mean, the, the end result of what I was going to say is that, that these applications still have to comply with the site plan and special permit requirements under six fifteen and six seventeen. And six seventeen under the special permit has, um, is loaded with language about pedestrian vehicular safety. Um, traffic issues, et cetera. So I agree, it's a concern. Um, uh, but, but it. I'll just throw that out there as a little bit of mitigation of those concerns.
Um, my next comment is one of, um. I'll call it a disagreement of terminology. I don't see this as inclusionary zoning. This is a density bonus in exchange for below market rate housing. Inclusionary zoning is across the board. All property above a certain size, anywhere in a community has to include. A, a certain amount of affordable housing. And so I, I just want to flag that I do think there needs to be a conversation about inclusionary zoning with the town. I don't think there's any way that we can get to ten percent with some, without something more than this. And probably the biggest thing that would hold me as an individual and possibly DNA from um, supporting this wholeheartedly. Is the sense that the way land prices are, the economics of stuff, that this will disproportionately affect the already. The few remaining moderate income areas of the community that will add with added density areas that already have some affordable housing. And it's not going to be fairly shared around the community and that really for us to wholeheartedly, or I'll say me because I'm speaking as me, for me to wholeheartedly say this, it really has to be part of a larger package. Where there is something close to true inclusionary zoning, so uh, places not governed by this um, get covered. And two, that there's some commitment, and I know this is not under your jurisdiction, but the town really uses its own resources. Um, to develop affordable housing. So there was something that I didn't look at in detail, but proposal for development of the Island Beach parking lot. And um, we're going to be staring down the barrel of eight thirty G until larger. Resources are brought to bear than just something like this.
Mr. Shahadi, we're really looking forward to having you join our affordable housing task force. If you could come tomorrow at four o'clock. Um, I'm going to send you an invite.
Thursday, Thursday.
I mean, Thursday at four o'clock. We're going to send you an invite. So let me just, and wait, wait, Mr.
Let's have this, let's have this conversation offline because I have a very busy consulting practice and.
Okay, so Mr. Shahadi, if I could answer your question first, because what you're covering. We're going to, some of it, we're going to be talking about on Thursday. So I will go ahead. Um, here's the answer to your question. We are fully aware. Of the problem with the, the variation in land values and with the concentration. Of affordability towards the western end of town. For that reason, I think you were already signed on, we are proposing an affordable housing trust be created to, by the town. And the trust would be funded to subsidize affordable housing. That means, and it would be. In conjunction with an affordable housing plan that we have to file with the state anyway. The, the trust would have priorities for its funding and what it subsidizes. And our goal is to spread the affordable housing across town. And not have it be concentrated in one area, but we recognize that even with these bonuses that we are giving now. We may have to grant additional subsidies. So that is our aim. That's the first part. Um, the next stuff that we're going to talk about, I'm probably, um, we're going to go to, uh, um. It's a spoiler alert, but we are planning on going to the BET. To ask for direct um, funding um, in, by the town in terms of on lending. Uh, for affordable housing, uh, that would actually be for the housing authority, but again, we would want to see it spread throughout town. And not concentrated in any specific area. And finally, Mr. Baralek. Has something that you will probably enjoy hearing about. Um, Bob, why don't you go ahead and talk about TIF real fast?
Sure, I, I couldn't agree with you more that, that, that this little contribution. Uh, that, that six, one, ten regulation represents to the overall effort to build affordable housing in Greenwich is, is, is relatively small. Uh, but it is absolutely a brick in the, in a, in a major facility we're trying to build. I think that the, the most impactful thing that the town can do is exactly what you described, which is put some money. Into affordable housing development. As you no doubt know. Uh, with land prices so high, and indeed this is all over the country, but especially here, with land prices so high, construction costs so high. And that. It's impossible, literally economically impossible to build affordable housing. Using conventional financing, even with low income housing tax credits. Every project I've looked at in the last X number of years has had a funding gap. And if you can't, if a developer can't fill the funding gap, the project doesn't get built. So one of the, one of the things we're working on as a way to try to fill the, the funding gap. Is explore options like the housing trust fund. But also, uh, something that is generally known as tax increment financing. Uh, it, it basically involves a situation where you take a piece of property that is putting some small amount of tax revenue into the town. A developer comes in, improves it dramatically, say, for example, building an affordable property on it. And would, would dramatically increase the tax revenue from that property. But to encourage the developer to build that property and put affordable in it. The, the town is willing to take less than one hundred percent of what would normally be the incremental taxes revenue that was, was afforded from that development. And allow the developer to use that incremental real estate tax savings to finance the gap. Um, I'm sure you've seen that before many municipalities across the country use. What's called tax increment financing for affordable housing. And that's one of my sort of personal missions in this.
Sure, okay. Glad to hear that's under consideration.
Yeah, so that, so those are, we know that we have to be multi-pronged and we know that when we, when we write our affordable housing plan. We have to focus on where the housing's going to be. And its scale and how we're going to disperse it in town, all where the needs it is. We want to start with a United Way Housing Needs Assessment. Um, and then start with a need and then build that inclusionary and more diverse future, but we got to, we get.
I appreciate the larger picture thinking. I appreciate what you both said. The reality that I will flag is this is here and now, and in some point in the relatively near future will be approved. Um, those others are much more speculative and I think you've all been in situations where. One piece of the puzzle gets approved, other pieces don't. And leaves a community like Byram in the situation where we are still bearing a disproportionate share of.
Well, don't, don't despair on us because the housing trust that we just referenced is going, is already scheduled. To be before the Board of Selectmen. We've just, we just did a motion on it um, to move it forward to the Board of Selectmen. Um, and it, in two weeks at their next meeting because we couldn't do it till we moved it and it will be before the RTM in June. Um, tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday, we are discussing when we will go to the BET on these other proposals. And we plan to do it around mid-year. Just because we want to get through the RTM thing first, but so this is not, this is just. The one that's sitting on our table right now, but we are moving forward on all of these and it's not like we're going to just do one thing and go home.
So let me close out my remarks with what I'll call three nitpicks.
Okay, please, love nitpicks, go.
Uh, the, I think the income test period for moderate housing is two years. I would encourage you to consider it being for longer. Um, I, for a long time, was a board member of, of a regional affordable housing lender that I won't name because I'm no longer in their board. And wrestled for a long time with what I will call younger families who were temporarily of a constrained income. Who got benefits, particularly homeownership, and five years later, they were doing fine. Versus a middle-aged couple, family with kids that the forty thousand they were making is all they are going to make. Um, and um, I don't know the easiest way, but I would say having a longer income test period. Would um, increase the likelihood that the benefit goes to somebody who is long-term. Um, lower moderate income or in the affordable, affordable target group that you're trying to housing Greenwich. And not somebody who is passing through that income group on the way to greater economic.
Yeah, you've left my, you've just left my wheelhouse. Bob, do you have any depth on this?
No.
Okay, we'll check it with, it's got it, we'll run it by legal counsel. We'll look at the statutes. If you're comfortable, Mr. Shahadi, that the. Statutes would allow us to do that and without being discriminatory. Um, Katie, I don't know, we just need to check with um, John Wetmore, more uh, on the, on whether or not we can do that and that. And how we administer affordability.
Um, the next issue is, I thought your asset test was somewhat odd. That you're excluding ownership of real estate in Greenwich, but not ownership of real estate elsewhere. So I'm not sure how you completely check it, but to me, it would seem to be this subsidy should be going to somebody who does not own real estate, period.
Good point. Yeah, great point. We didn't focus on it. You know, we were working with a regulation that was already in place and we probably said, oh, that wording's been there since nineteen eighty-seven. Must be a.
No, this was actually new wording, but it was in response to someone who did own real estate in Greenwich. So we didn't think outside the box on that one.
Yes, okay, there you go. Yeah. So thanks for that. That's really helpful because there were a couple of things that we missed out. In fact. One of the things that you guys raised and just um, was what were we going to do with the WB zone? And the WB zone would get the LBR two. Bonus was what we thought, because again, you want to protect the WB. But the WB has a very specific restriction on it, which is that, the, is that deep, the, the environmental people from the state. Would not endorse anything that puts affordability at, of people who live in affordable units at any kind of flood risk. And there's some case law in that is, I'm sure you know. So um, that was our take, but again. The CAM regulation, the coastal area regulations and the deep consideration would preempt anything that we do with that. That's kind of where we are. Katie, you look like you're thinking something. Okay, all right. So she wasn't thinking anything. Um, so, but, so we would do that with the WB and I had, we had responded to that question. But I don't know if you saw the response.
Uh, the last uh, comment I would have, or the last nit is just that I'm thinking again in terms of Byram. The language, I did not delve into it in detail about open space, uh, et cetera. Would be very hard to meet in a community, a dense area like Byram. It's probably easier to meet in the GB zones along the coast road. But I can't think of any place in Byram where there's enough space to add the additional density that's allowed by this. And still have lot space available to provide some kind of. Um, of, of, of open space, outdoor space. Uh, I forget the wording of it.
Mr. McRae may have to help me on the visioning of this, but if you're going to a point seven five FAR, that's going to leave you lot space. See, that's why.
We will, but I, I, it will, it will, but I think Mr. Shah, Mr. Shahadi has a, as a point is that the um. The lot sizes of Byram.
Are so small.
Yeah, ninety percent of them plus plus are very, very small. Because it was a subdivisions, you know, in, in lot layout from, you know, pre-war kind of thing. I think the average size is almost fifty by a hundred in most locations. Which is, you know, even for, even for R six is a small lot.
So either be aware of it, um, or just be prepared for variances along that issue for if any project comes forward under this in, 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 you know, the kind of LBR two zone that Byram has.
I, I think it was also intended, but let's make it on the same page here, that you could use rooftop space.
I did not see that. I did not read these, you know, I read them over the weekend while I was doing something else, so um. It may be in there, but um, anyway, I, I appreciate all your time. You've been more than generous. I didn't expect you to give this much time. I expected to be cut off after three minutes. So thank you very much for hearing.
Well, this is really, we might have cut you off if there had been a hundred and fifty people waiting to speak, but this is really important to us. We've been struggling with this thing for about a year and we're trying to really hard to get it right and have it work. For all perspectives. And on the one side, we had to address resident concerns as well. We had people speaking at our. Meetings that they were concerned about the density and not just in Byram, but in other parts of town. Um.
Um, and, and Mr. Shahadi, I would just caution you in the future against being so thoughtful in your comments because you might get drafted.
Yeah, we'll draft you, you know, I warn you, fair warning, we do draft anybody who gets interested in zoning, just so you know.
Um, I appreciate the uh, um. The thought, um, we'll, we'll have a conversation about that later. Anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for making the time for us. All right, does anybody else from the public wish to speak? Anybody else going once, please raise your virtual hand. Will you talk to people enough about, about something they? Okay, so um, that's it. No more public comment. I was thinking we'd get really lots of people. Um, but I guess we talked to everybody for so long that mostly no, huh? Um, so, go ahead, Katie. I was going to say.
Going to suggest that I, I uh, create a redlined copy, if you will, like literally put the changes based on the comments received today and the ones at this meeting, of course. Um, and put in red what we've changed from this draft. Um, and I can date it accordingly and then just, you know. Put it, put it on the um, next appropriate agenda, which would be uh, probably. put it up, put it on the next appropriate agenda, which would be probably not the next one, right, Pap? But the one after that.
I mean, we can accommodate whatever you'd like.
Oh, next agenda if we can.
If we can. Okay, good. All right, great.
But you're gonna distribute that, right, Katie, to the commissioners?
Yes.
Well, and let's have a conversation.
Yes. And by the way, one thing is that the definition of inclusionary zoning, just to say, I've seen it defined as we're defining it. Katie has as well, that it is, it can.
It is exactly that.
But it doesn't have to be the entire town. I have seen it in lots and lots and lots of instances where it's not the entire town. Now, would it be cool if you had a little bit of, you know, everywhere? Yeah, I'm not sure how you do that, but we'll get there one step at a time. So in the meantime, everybody's agreed, we're leaving this application open?
Yes.
Okey dokey. And we'll try to get it on as soon as we can after that, right after tonight?
Yes.
And and thank you all of all the people who did come and listen and and speak. I guess by now people have left that we're going to speak. I'm not seeing them anymore. The next application is has been combined in the past, so we're going to combine it again now. This is ninety-seven East Elm Properties LLC for a final site plan and special permit. And then ninety-nine East Elm Properties LLC for a final site plan and special permit. We've combined the items in the past, so we're combining them now. I believe Mr. Bristol is representing the applicant and I am not seeing Mr. Bristol here.
Nope, he's there.
Okay, you you've got him then, because I don't see where he is.
There we go. Good evening, everybody. My name is Christopher Bristol, Attorney Christopher Bristol, representing the applicants in the projects for ninety-seven East Elm Street and ninety-nine East Elm Street. I'm not going to go into the background. We've, you know, we've seen this project before. The last time we were before you was a couple of weeks ago when I actually thought we got almost all done, almost all done. I know that there was basically two different topics that we're discussing, one being the screening along the shared property line with ninety-three East Elm Street. And I think we decided that was going to be a solid fence and that was with the the neighbor's input. And then the last question, the one that's still lingering is the TPW's comment that the shared driveway between ninety-seven and ninety-three not be used for access onto the ninety seventy East Elm Street property. When we were last before you, DPW commented that they needed a legal document to that effect. And although we resisted at first, we eventually welcomed it with open arms and embraced it fully. And created a document with we to basically add a layer of restriction onto the both the ninety-seven and ninety-nine East Elm Street properties, because we're treating them sort of as a site line, although they're separate, obviously. So that's why I included the ninety-nine to prevent or to prohibit the ninety-three, ninety-seven shared driveway from being used for access onto these into these properties. And just to, by way of a reminder, also that we set the site to prevent this from happening as well, because between the carport at ninety seventy East Elm Street and the shared driveway that we're talking about with ninety-three, there's obstructions, basically. There's going to be a solid fence, there's going to be plantings, there's going to be an eighteen-inch knee wall, all those things would physically prohibit access or using that shared driveway for access onto the the site. Now, we, when I submitted the draft declaration for this to restrict our.
Um, hold on a second, Mr. Bristol, Mr. Bazili.
Yes, hi. Hi, I would just like to ask Mr. Bristol. You've got to speak so I can understand you. I I just I'm having trouble understanding you.
Yeah.
Speak more clearly.
Yes.
This is our old thing. We go back many years. So anyway.
Okay, so Mr. Mr. Bristol, I think you were just speaking quickly and not articulating as clearly as Mr. Bazili needs. You were sort of like reading a book report almost if that if I could help with that. So, okay, if Mr. Bazili, just raise your hand and I'll flag Mr. Bristol anytime you start having trouble. Do you need him to start over?
No, no, let's see. Where were we? The shared driveway we're talking about at ninety-three, there is going to be a solid fence and a knee wall. All right, so you could pick up around there, I suppose.
Okay. And just raise your hand and I'll stop him. Go ahead.
To prohibit physical access between the site and the shared ninety-three, ninety-seven driveway. We did, as the plan shows, propose an eighteen-inch knee wall and solid fence. And there's also a great change. When I prepared the declaration as requested by DPW, the intent was to add an extra layer of restriction onto our property whereby we prohibit the owners and occupants and residents of those properties from using the ninety-three, ninety-seven shared driveway. Again, that was requested by DPW and it prepared that. Staff had come back with a couple proposed changes. One of which was to change the duration of this restriction. I had originally proposed that it be effective as so long as the site was developed in accordance with the site plan. Staff had suggested basically that it be permanent once the property was initially developed according to the site plan and run in perpetuity, which I disagreed with because I wanted to leave an option open for its use. We needed it in the future or should we should the owner choose not to go forward with the site plan? So what I had suggested, the last change I had suggested to staff was that we change the duration of the restriction to coincide with there being two driveways or portions thereof on the subject property, which is the DPW condition that gave rise to this whole requirement and request for a legal document restricting access to that shared driveway. So that was in in process and review by DPW and just before this application started, before our presentation started. We got TPW comments back saying that basically they disapproved of the document because they have no power of enforcement or they have they have no method of enforcement. I was a little bit frustrated because we were, again, taking the direction from DPW and trying our best to 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 make everyone happy, basically. And as a blanket statement, I mean, the the site is compliant, fully compliant zoning, as the CEO signed off on it. DPW has this last one, one thing. But in terms of the zoning regulations, everything is compliant, the site's compliant, everything works. So it's up to this one, it's one issue. I've tried my best to comply with it. Again, I'm a little frustrated because I don't see how this is any different than any of the other of hundreds of conditions that are placed up on site plans, et cetera, you know, by the commission every year for their for various projects. So I sort of don't know what to make of this of this one of this of BPW's latest comment. Certainly willing to have this restriction and put it on land records and phrase it accurately. We've complied with everything else that that we've been asked in terms of the screening and everything else. The site's compliant, the buildings are compliant. So I I think we're out of time too. So I don't see why this should not be approved. We've complied with every we comply with every portion of the regulations. We've actually done our best to comply with what DPW wanted as voiced by the commission. So that's that's sort of where we stand. I don't see why that should not be approved, given how.
So is the is the wording now that the the restriction lasts as long as the the property is used according according to the site plan? Is that what it currently says?
That that's that's why I proposed first. Staff had come back and said and changed that language to basically say once it's developed accordance with the site plan and then we give up, then we restrict that right in perpetuity, basically. So it was so it's without an end. I had changed that the third option, which I accurately described the position of DPW giving rise to this whole conversation, which was it really comes down to the existence of two curb cuts on one property. To be to be clear, according to DPW standard, we can have a curb on a different property that's two inches away from the one of my property, but we can't put any curb cuts on your own property, on a single property, have to be fifty feet apart. So that is what's generating this need by DPW to prohibit access that we're trying to make them comfortable with to this shared driveway. And again, we have a physical impediments that prohibit access to the site up that driveway. And where I thought I crafted a very simple but very direct document to also do that and and help with that condition as well. So to hear DPW say, well, we don't we don't agree with that. We don't, we don't, we disapprove of this document because we can't enforce it. It seems a little strange to me when I don't see it as any different than a multitude of other conditions that are placed upon a whole other list of site plans.
Mr. Bristol, so right now, where we are, we have ninety-nine seems to be have been resolved in terms of outstanding issues. Ninety-seven, we have seemed to have resolved all the outstanding issues, inclusive of the fence to this point.
Correct.
Okay. And if staff could actually just just correct me if I'm wrong. For both properties, we have a maximum extension to July.
Yeah, we have. We have executive order time on this to apply if if the app, if the commissioner or whoever wants to have time to. I mean, I I'd like to say there's more than three options, but I think there's obviously three options here that we can you know, the commission can consider right now or the applicant can consider. There's time on the clock.
Hold hold those hold those that point that thought. And then the reading that just what just came in from DPW. It's their discussion of enforcement, the necessary enforcement authority. And I think that comes down to be seems to me the crux of the issue at the moment. Reading the most current comments, would you agree on that, Mr. Bristol?
Yes, yes. I mean, okay, I've seen I've seen I've been doing this for a number of years and I I don't think I remember seeing this comment ever. You know.
Okay.
And it's of removing the of what's the enforcement of of the of the access piece on the driveway?
I guess of.
Of the of the travel way of the driveway?
Yes, it seems to be the case that it can't come out and prohibit, you know, residents from ninety-nine East Elm Street or on ninety-seven from using that driveway, even though it's physically impossible to gain access to the site from it.
Right. Oh, sorry, Nick, sorry.
It it seems actually what they were what they're saying is that DPW determined they they would be responsible for enforcing the access limitations between ninety-three and ninety-seven, so on and so forth. And they're, you know, they're limited in their authority to enforce that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Mr. McRae. I'm not clear if that is.
Exactly.
You know, I I I can understand their apprehension in creating a situation that they would be the 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 traffic cop, no pun intended on it, but I'm not, I'm not sure if this was, you know, I I'm not sure if there's not another way that this can be explained or addressed, you know what I mean, without having to redesign the site plan.
Yes, Mr. Larrick, I completely agree. So I think we're at an issue to understand what the limitations or who has the authority for the enforcement and or could this be done in such a way that no party needs to enforce it, other than that that there's a there's language text or an agreement that actually does that enforcement itself.
I mean, it's confusing though, because if the actual access to the road is eliminated, then why is DPW involved in the enforcement?
It's not, no, it's not the issue.
It's the sightline. It's the distance, sorry, the distance between the driveways.
So ninety-three, which is not a party to the application, and ninety-seven, which is the Western lot, has a driveway that spans the property line and is shared right now with the with a deed restriction and access agreement, whatever you want to call it. And then ninety-seven and ninety-nine is proposed to have a common driveway, which would essentially be the primary access to the development once built. But that driveway would still exist. And so DPW, reading their regulations, considers that two driveways on one lot and it's not far enough apart.
Right.
So and that's I keep coming back to that.
Enforcement part, though. I'm sorry, what's the enforcement?
So ninety, so what DPW wanted was ninety-seven to extinguish their rights to use the driveway with ninety-three to support their what they believe the intent of the their their regulations are. And Mr. Bristol attempted to do that in a manner that he saw fit. And DPW has responded today with the idea that, no, since we would still be responsible for enforcing or keeping up with the deed restriction, we don't want to be involved with it. We think if we think it can be redesigned to eliminate the need for it and that that should be looked into.
Wouldn't wouldn't it be a matter of site plan enforcement like for for the zoning enforcement officer?
Well, we what are we supposed to do? Stand out there all day and make sure that it happens?
No, the truth is there's a whole other number of conditions of site plans all the time that are built into it on the same level or in the same manners.
But I I don't know the authority that we would have to prevent your client from getting off their own property. I mean, that to put it bluntly.
Right. Now, Mr. Bristol, in your discussions with with Department of Public Works, were they aware of the the physical constraints that were built into ninety-seven? The 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 screen, the drop in elevation between the two properties, all that?
They've they've been aware of this entire time. I know, I mean, I see I see Mr. DeAndrea's hand. I know that Mr. DeAndrea's had discussions with with DPW individually, as he does all the time. So I mean, if he if he wants to comment about specific conversations, that's fine, but I I know that this has been part and parcel of the application for a long time.
Okay. In addition, I think Mr. DeAndrea can hear me. In your discussion again with DPW, we were talking about access. Was that defined at all or more narrowly to talk about vehicular access? Because it seemed to me that if they're concerned about the curb cut and it's narrowly defined as vehicular at access, that might be a path forward?
I I originally proposed it to to state vehicular access and staff wanted me to remove it to coincide with the phrasing of DPW's comments previously.
Okay.
I mean, perhaps we're in an artful maybe if that's what they meant, but again, I'm not, I don't, I'm not criticizing the crafting, obviously, just going by.
Ms. Ms. Evelyn, can you bring Mr. DeAndrea up?
He's he's in the room.
He's actually there. He's just muted. He's I just checked. Yep. Patrick already brought him in. He's just got his hand up because he wants to talk and he can talk.
If I may talk, then I will.
Okay.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. The way I see it is that Mr. Marucci is tasked with looking at regulations. He admitted in his latest memo that he has no enforcement. Therefore, logically follows that the enforcement goes to the commission. Commission does that by imposing a condition that there's no vehicular access. That should be the end of it, in my opinion. We cannot move the driveway farther to the right as you face the property simply because we don't have the sight lines. We went through an extensive analysis of that and Mr. Marucci approved the summation that was provided by the outside consultant. So it comes down to the fact that it's physically impossible to drive a vehicle over ninety-three and access ninety-seven. Mr. Marucci has no enforcement authority. He gives that. He recognizes that's under the commission. The commission imposes a condition and I think at that point we're done. There is no way that the vehicle can enter. And I think the commission's in a position to approve the application tonight with the condition that there be no vehicular access from ninety-three to ninety-seven. And I thank you for the opportunity to make those few comments.
Okay. I think it's kind of an interesting issue here. It gets back to what I said before is that this is this discussion about a curb cut. Bringing the connotation that it's vehicular access, which is the issue here. And if we're talking about access to the that portion of the lot, whether whatever it is, I don't believe we have the authority to actually limit your access to the your own part of the property. But I think it was under understanding that the safety issue here that DPW has, they don't want multiple cars going in and out of that driveway. It comes down to, again, it's vehicular access, not, not total access. So I think maybe it's our discussion is that can we, can we as a commission talk about that narrow aspect of it? And how that relates to this?
Well, I, I don't want to back up the train too far, Mr. McRae, but you know,
That's okay.
The, the issue, I think I've stated it already, the, the issue that I see is I don't know what zoning authority we would have to prevent a property owner from standing on their own property. And I include, include access in it. So that, that, that's the problematic part about the commission conditioning it. I don't know if it's quote unquote legal. The second issue is if the commission was to condition it and the, the was found to be a legal condition, let's just take it to the end of the road. I don't know if DPW as the, is responsible to answer to us when it comes to their regulations and therefore won't issue a driveway permit. So therefore we're in this, we're in this catch twenty-two where we have a compliant site plan, but nobody can get permits to build it. So I, 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 I don't want to, I hate to delay this again, but you know, perhaps we need to have a discussion with DPW about what they want. I mean, we did receive this at a very late juncture, so we're all kind of digesting it as we're sitting and, and discussing it and you know, I think we're all expecting that language would be the issue and not the design, so to speak. So I, I don't know how to, I, I don't know if I have my best thinking cap on to assist the commission, but obviously we can work it out as long as we need to, to try to come to some sort of conclusion if the commission wants to.
Right. So if we play this out in terms of process that the applicant would need to follow the building permit process. And part of that is actually, as you said, getting its review and approval of the proposed curb cuts through DPW Engineering and Highway. If we were looking at any kind of condition, they would want to still, even if this was, even if this was not an issue, they would still want to see it prior to building permit.
But they would, yeah. Sorry.
They would want to see this prior to building permit. So if there were any standing conditions on that, that we had recommended or would, would recommend, it could be addressed at that time. So if we, you know, if we said paint the building blue subject to approval by DPW, they would just have to go back and say, yeah, we're going to paint it blue. DPW would have opportunity to review it and go from there. And that's, that's prior to building permit.
Right. But the, the obvious answer is with any decision like that with a permit, it either complies or doesn't. And if they find it not to comply, I don't know what the applicant's recourse is except to redesign. And you know, wouldn't that behoove us to do that now while we have an open application rather than send it down the road and hope that things go well?
Like, may I speak? Maybe this is too basic, but why if we make it a, a site plan condition that's enforceable by zoning enforcement, why is that not good enough? And in addition to the legal document that I have, you know, I mean, I'm happy to report line records that I had done before.
I, I mean, I, again, it's the commission's decision. I don't know. And Katie, jump in here. I, I don't know if it's a enforceable act to prohibit somebody from using, you know, it's, it's one thing to say you have to turn your lights off at ten. You have to put a fence up to screen you from the neighbors, those type of things. But this is at some point where we're taking your property rights, I believe, and, and
Well, I guess, I guess I'm agreeing to it, though. It's, 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 I'm voluntarily agreeing. I mean, and I
I think you understand, we can't, Mr. Mr. Bristol, that even though that you may agree to it, the commission can't put it in unreasonable condition on, even if you go into it willingly. Right? I mean, you could kill it tomorrow and then we throw it out of court, you know, it gets thrown out of court, you know, you, you know, you want something that's going to stand. That, and it has a solid basis. I, I feel like the basis of this is not solid right now.
Because we're talking about, if we're talking about zoning enforcement as, to look into this, it would have to be based on a condition we have as opposed to a code or a technical requirement that highways has, or DPW has.
Right. And I believe
That's where the split is. That's the, that's the kind of funny line we're dancing here.
Is, is the question, because it's, 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 it smacks of a title restriction, you maybe, is it, is it literally, is it because it's, it falls into that territory? Is that gives you pause?
That, that's my uncomfortableness with it. You, you pinpointed it. It's that I just and, and, you know, I, I mean, I don't want to problem solve on the fly, but you know, there's obviously a number of remedies and perhaps the DPW needs to be illuminated as to legally what a deed restriction looks like and what the responsibilities are. And if, if the two parties involved are the only ones that are, you know, the enforceable agencies to it, then maybe that should be enough. But you know, again, there, they made it, they, they've issued a decision tonight that obviously expresses their uncomfortability with that. So or they think that they're somehow inserted into the middle of, of a neighbor dispute potentially. And I don't know if I agree with that a hundred percent, but at the same time, I, I don't, I understand why they're saying it. You know what I mean?
I guess in my mind, I equate it with, I, I don't see this as, as different and other condition, these zoning conditions, because we talk about often, you can park here, you can't park here, you can put a driveway here, you can't put a driveway here. You know, you can, it, it seems to me to be very I think it's, I think it's very close. I under, I appreciate your perspective, I know, but I also am of the opinion that it seems to me to be, to fall under something that is controllable as part of a site plan and therefore be enforced by the E.
But I mean, that's, I don't, I think that's fair to say. I mean, I, I guess that I'm, I'm, I, I wish that there was a comfortability with DPW that, that they could issue some comment that say there's a reasonable opportunity to issue a building, I mean, a driveway permit for this, but you know, like I just said, if we go forward and condition it, the commission was inclined to do that, what, what happens next? You know what I mean? Because it doesn't change the DP, the Department of Public Works requirements for driveways.
Yes, I mean,
The site plan is shown on the, as, as you noted, the driveway is shown on the site plan. I mean, what if there was an additional note on the site plan that said the driveway has to be in that location and cannot be moved without coming back to the commission? Just as an added level of understanding amongst everybody.
The, the new driveway.
Right.
It, it actually
The new driveway is not an issue, though. The, the, the issue is the existence of the current common driveway with ninety-three that DP
So then how about, how about it states directly on the plan that there should be no CO unless that driveway is removed?
They don't want to ruin that driveway.
They don't what?
They're not removing that driveway because if they remove that driveway, they take it away from the neighbor.
To remove the access point, though, the access part on the drive of the driveway.
Rights of access, not physical acts, like the, the, the physical space is not changing. It's the rights to use it.
Right. So why can't that just be noted on the plan?
As a site plan condition would be, which is, which is what I was talking about.
I mean, I, I
And it's, it's
struggling to, I'm struggling to, I guess
Not clear that that condition, what, what they're saying is it's not clear that that's a condition within our authority.
Right.
Okay.
Problem.
It's the, the rights to access. And I think I understand where Mr. Leroy was coming from. It's, it's, do we have the authority to limit a property owner's right to his property?
DPW has said that they should not access. So, but we put a condition on the site plan that is a DPW condition that we have no, no power over because we're essentially prohibiting somebody from using their own property. Now, stupid question, if the applicant and the neighbor are in total agreement and have a signed agreement that's in our file, you know, aren't we done with the problem?
This has nothing to do with the neighbor. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, we're not modifying or changing the neighbor's rights in any way. They, we're restricting our own.
Okay. All right. So it was a stupid question. I was trying to help.
So what I was, I was saying that the, the neighbor actually benefits because we're not using that driveway and we're still obligated to maintain sort of our half of it. You know, that's why they make, that's why it's a better, a better plan. And frankly, if we were developing this as a single lot, you know, we could use that shared driveway for our access and for our construction and everything else. So that's why I said that when you, you know, to, when you step back on balance, how we have it is actually better for the neighbor and it's better for us as well. It's just a little bit of a quirk and how everything sort of dovetails, I guess, if you want to call it. But I, I, I agree with, with Mr. DeLuca that it's, it, we can make it a site plan condition and, and force it that way.
Yeah, but the site plan condition is to tell someone that they can't use their own property and that is a puzzling thing.
I, that's not the case. So we still have access through the shared driveway we're creating. You're not, you're not removing our access entirely.
No, but you're telling somebody you shall not step on this part of your own land. That's a weird thing for a zoning commission to do.
This sort of, so, sorry, Chris, I just want to, so Mrs. DeLuca's up to speed with what we're saying here. This is the current driveway for the site here and it spans the property. This is ninety-three, this is ninety-seven, this is ninety-nine. And it is, it would remain in existence and it is existence today. It is the accessway for this lot and this lot. With the new proposal, it would be this driveway here, this driveway would remain, half of which is on ninety-seven, half of which is on ninety-three. For, I'm sorry, someone's mic's on.
I think that's
This, this, what DPW is asking essentially, or what was asking was that ninety-seven extinguished their rights to use this shared, existing shared driveway, of which, like I just mentioned, is half of it is on their property. So, you know, DPW's comments tonight say, if you could redesign it where, you know, ninety-seven and ninety-nine have a driveway or ninety-three and ninety-seven continue to use it shared, and then this is, you know, you know, just think of all the permutations to separate it so that there's no second driveway on any lot, then that would be acceptable. But that's not what they had asked for prior to the meeting, so.
I think it's, this is a very good thing to show Patrick because I think, as I said before, it comes down to the curb cut issue. And like you had said, we can't deny a property owner's access to their own land. But I think in this case, it's really coming down to the access for a vehicle to travel across the driveway to access ninety-seven. Not ninety-three, not ninety-nine, just ninety-seven. And I believe we really kind of covered that. And if we say that they, you know, vehicular, vehicular access is relinquished. But you can still stand on it and you can still, you know, they're not giving up their land. That may be the resolution of this issue that we have.
We're just limiting it. It's a use issue, maybe.
Exactly, exactly.
That's exactly what we did. That, that's exactly the intent of the, of the declaration, of restrictive declaration that I proposed just for the residents and owners of our property, that, that we, that the residents and owners of ninety-seven, I included ninety-nine because I looked at it as a site at, that they will not be able to use that access, that, that shared ninety-three, ninety-seven driveway. It's, it's an added layer of restriction on our property that, that forces compliance and dovetails with the DPW conditions. That's an issue.
Mr. Bristol, are these lots being merged in any way, what, by the development?
Uh, no, we didn't intend to merge them.
Okay. So if, if it sounds, I mean, I'm not going to predict, but if the commission was possibly going to entertain the motion to, to condition this, is it possible to make sure that, is it okay, I guess, or agreeable that you take ninety-nine off the table so that there's no conflict with ninety-three and ninety-seven shared rights?
Yeah, I mean, however you want to do it. I guess I, I was thinking because the implication here was that the common driveway would be ninety-seven, ninety-nine would be used to access the ninety-seven and ninety-nine site. That's why I use, that's why I included ninety-nine, but we don't have to. I mean, it's
Okay.
I think that might be the best thing, just to exclude that.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, there's nothing mechanically that's going to impact ninety-seven by not having ninety-nine as a party.
No, I mean, I guess the, the only thing I was thinking of was because ninety-nine, you know, there's a shared space, a shared courtyard between the two properties. I mean, if you're looking at literally prohibiting access for something approved by way of, of these applications, ninety-nine can drive through the driveway and I guess, you know, try to go through the carport over there, through the new wall and everything else. But again, that's the only reason. I don't really care if you include ninety-nine or ninety-seven.
I just don't see that being
That's fine.
Necessary if it, if it's not based on the script.
I understand.
So, you know, let ninety-nine, seven have their, their, their party, and ninety-three and ninety-seven have their, their agreement. I, the only question, I mean, this is my only concern, I guess, if the commission was inclined to condition the decision would be what happens with DPW? And I, I don't know the answer. Obviously, they're not here. So I, I, I don't know if that's something that we need to talk about before we close the application or if the commission feels strongly enough about it, but that, that's my only, that's my, my second concern.
I, I honestly, I honestly, I'm sorry, but my leaning is that I would like to work on this some more, talk to DPW and I would also, I would kind of like to get a legal view on it, if this is where we've come to.
I would, I would love
I will, I will accept. I'm influenceable. So what else do people think?
I think we don't want a problem forty years down the road on this. And when we could take a little bit of time now, I think there is enough of an outstanding issue. And take a little bit of extra time now and maybe avoid a, an, a, a neighbor, neighbor battle at some time in the future.
I think, I think we can, with a little bit of thought, we could, could condition this to rectify this situation. But I believe Mr. Leroy is right. It's that issue of the relationship between the commission and Department of Public Works.
Yeah.
And if we had the opportunity just to make sure that we're both on the same page concerning this and understanding all of the detail behind this. I think it's, it's a specific issue for me is intent of the public, Department of Public Works and, and what their, what their meaning is applied to the, the detail and the, the proposed conditions that would be present once everything is done. Because I think actually it, it seems to me, as I read stuff here, is there are concerns about the closest of the curb cuts? And it seemed that maybe that the, the, the intent here is to, is to curtail vehicular access, as I said before.
Agree.
Okay.
So maybe that's the thing that they, we, we need to discuss or the commission needs to discuss with DPWs.
Yep.
What was their specific intent?
Okay. So we're going to need an extension on this application based on what three people have just said.
Did we have one?
Madam Chair, we could
This is a must close by five-four?
We, we have, we have executive order time that we can apply. So I, I mean, it's great to have consent, but we have the authority, I think, on this.
Okay. It says maximum extension of close is available, but because of the additional statutory time. Okay. So I thought we had to get the consent. If we don't, we'll just extend it. We're going to get in the habit of that. And then May twentieth is going to be a rough shock, people.
Mr. Leroy.
But they went away. I'm sorry. Mr. DeAndrea had a hand up and then I saw a neighbor, so.
And the Seminics have their hand up. Mr. Seminac has his hand up. But I would, I, I like what Victoria is saying as well as what Nick is saying. Does anybody dissent or agree with them that is not speaking?
I agree.
Okay. Dennis, any, no, you're nodding. You don't have to just wave your hand and say yes. Okay. All right. Okay.
And if, and if you do dissent, I know where you live.
All right.
Mr. Just a quick question. Could we get this on the, at the beginning of the next agenda if things get resolved?
Well, it's a public hearing item, so it can be first on the public hearing or second depending the revision, but we can, we can, yeah, we will, we will not labor this any longer.
Okeydokey. So, so Mr. Seminac had his hand up, but now it's gone. So we're just gonna
Hand came back up.
Okay, Mr. Seminac, I know this is, I think, Mrs. Seminac. Yes, ma'am. Or sir. Yes, this is Ms.
Okay.
Hi.
Good evening. Look, we're happy with the applicant.
Good evening. Um, look, we're happy with the applicant's declaration. We, we agree that there needs to be something that runs with the land so that people who buy our house, you know, understand exactly who can use the driveway and how it can be used. We agree also that they should retain access to walking on their own property. We feel that the DPW comments state that all ingress and egress should be restricted, not just vehicular. Now, they can ingress and egress through our driveway. We're not just talking about ingress and egress through their carport. So, we're talking about all ingress and egress through our driveway. What kind would we expect? I don't know. Somebody needs to make a delivery. And they, they, they decide to use this driveway, or I, I don't know, but I don't wanna speculate and I, I don't think it's good for the value of my property to have people speculate on how the driveway can be used. So, we feel that the, the, the language that was suggested is almost there. We feel comfortable if they just strike the word vehicular and then, and then everybody is clear. And we can explain and there's a document running with the deed that ingress and egress is restricted. That doesn't stop them from walking on their property. It just stops them from driving up and walking up and accessing their property from the shared driveway. And so I'm done on that matter. Um, and the other matter is, how can we, how can we be sure that the fence is actually gonna be built?
Uh, we'll make sure that that's zoning enforcement. That's not a problem.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. Um, all right, okay, so we're gonna leave this open, we're gonna figure it out and we'll try to get it.
Good question though. Uh, Katie, Patrick, what, um, would it be appropriate in the discussions that the applicant has with DPW that somebody present there just to understand what's going on?
I, I don't know if the, I mean, I've been, I'm not envisioning Mister McRae as a conversation with the applicant, us and the, the DPW. I think, I think your, your points, the commission's opinion is clear here. I think the applicant's clear. I think we just need to understand with Council DPW what the apprehension is or what the hurdles are and what we can do to accomplish what you guys have expressed tonight.
Right, so we can, we.
Of an internal meeting.
Right, we can get, we can get something to DPW to understand what we've been, we've discussed this evening.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, yeah, I, yeah, I don't, unless the applicant has a specific thing that they want that asked or settled or, you know, poignantly discussed that thing, I don't know what, I, I mean, I think we're all aware of what the issues are and, and how to solve them without requiring a redesign, so.
I mean, it got escalated up to the commissioner and that happened in, in recent days. It was understood that we needed to have an internal meeting, which there wasn't enough time to have that based on the, the recent, so. As Mister Lo said, we need to, we need to just have an internal meeting, I think, at this point.
Okay, very good. That's what I think I'm looking for.
Leaving application open. And thank you, uh, for your patience, Mister Bristol, and thank you for your patience, Mister and Mrs. Semenek. Um, with that, um, I've got a quick question. It's seven thirty-seven. We have one more application left tonight. Do you guys wanna soldier on and finish it? Or do you wanna take a fiver?
What is anybody's best guess how long that applicant, that last application's gonna take?
And Mister Hegney's got his hand up, who may want to offer a thought on that, I don't know.
Okay.
Doing it now, Mister Hegney's on his way and he's allowed to weigh in on our bathroom decision.
I for one say soldier on.
Okay, Mister Hegney.
Oceans, is that what, no, nothing, okay.
Well, we'll probably finish it quicker, more quickly if we soldier on than if we take a break.
Mister Hegney?
I can make this presentation in one minute, Madam Chair.
Let's hold his feet to the fire here.
Right, start, start the top stopwatch.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is a, a re-subdivision. We're looking to take four acres from Lot One, which is twenty-eight acres and add it to Lot Two, which is currently seventeen point seven. And we are doing this in order to provide for an area to put the septic for the event barn on Lot Two. It will not affect the conservation area and we would ask for your approval.
Being time's up.
Any time left?
No.
Okay, now, I think you were asked today, our pressing question is two of the people who were seated on this application are not here tonight. We are, we don't ever on the site plan, you've, all this has been passed on to you, right? We closed the site plan without realizing that Mister, well, Mister Levy was called away, Mister Hardman. We had not realized that he would not be here tonight. So, we have two people missing. Having the site plan closed, we do not wanna seat an alternate on it now. Um, and that's just because that's generally been our practice, unless you remember it differently, I don't. On this one, we, since we have it open and both the alternates were here the entire time, we could decide it tonight. Uh, your choice, your queen's gambit.
Uh, I did discuss this with my client after, uh, Pat brought it to my attention and, um, uh, my recollection is, at least from my time on the commission and other times.
That was centuries ago, it may not be relevant.
I realize it was a long time ago, uh, but, uh, uh, that if the alternates were present and were familiar with the application and had heard, uh, the presentations, uh, that they were eligible, uh, to vote in the event that a, uh, a member of the, uh, commission uh, was not able to attend. So, I, I think it's appropriate. Uh, my client would like to proceed with the vote tonight. And we would ask you to, uh, vote tonight.
Lots of people, the last time, I remember very clearly, we had to postpone something because Andy was, had been seated on it, it was closed. And then he wasn't at the meeting, so we had to postpone it. Uh, that's the last one I remember. Um, thoughts, um, just from a lea- legal point of view is my only concern. Yes, Mister Low.
Um, uh, Bob, have you been, uh, seated on and heard all these discussions about this application?
Yes, uh, all throughout and I even attended the site walk around. I think I've listened to every word the commission has heard.
Yeah, good.
You, you, okay, I, I think all three of you have been at all the meetings.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember, uh, whether, uh, you know, when Bob came on, so.
Okay. Um, all right, so Katie, Patrick, Patrick is dead silent. He's black.
Yeah, I mean, as I noted, obviously, I don't think there's any legal issue with it. I mean, I don't, it's not a practice that I think we should engage. I think it's bad form, um, and we, and it's not something that you should do on the regular, but the applicant's been very clear that he has no objection to it. We've had similar situations when there's only four voting members. We asked the applicant where they are on it. I think this is a similar type of thing. Um, so if, if the commission is comfortable, you should proceed and if you're not, then, then take it up in two weeks.
If they're, go ahead.
I think I, I, I agree with Mrs., uh, DeLuca. I think the only thing for me is i- i- it not so much with the applicant's issue or, or, uh, objection, not, not objection, it's the third party that we're not considering tonight. Um, I, I think I completely understand that, uh, the applicant would like to see some kind of movement on these, these applications. Um, and it's just the, my, my comfort zone with somebody coming in after, after we're done.
Okay, so, um.
But, uh, considering that, if the commission on a whole wants to move ahead, I would be okay with that.
I am always cautious what, in these things.
I, I, I hope it came across very clearly at the last hearing, uh, that we have worked very hard with our neighbors to come up with, uh, solutions to their concerns and issues, uh, and I believe we accomplished that and I think that was clear at the last meeting.
Yes, Mister, uh, Mister, I think you're right. You know, it's very clear. You've been actually talking to the neighbors and there's a better rapport there now. Uh, it, my concern, and it's just my concern, that is, uh, that it's that, that, that one neighbor that you didn't get to, or even somebody else who's not a neighbor, that has issues later on down the line.
But, but, but we're legal, we're legal with this. If we're legal, I, it, and and I don't understand the, the, the neighbor's standing, uh, the, the issue. Cause if our, if it's legal for us to vote and we vote, then, then everything's fine.
Uh, Mister Hegney, would, would, uh, would a two-week delay represent an, an appreciable setback for the applicant?
You know, it, it, uh, Mister Low, it's just one of those things that it's another two weeks, another two weeks, another two weeks. And we, we've been dealing with that and frankly, I, I thought we had a- arrived at a place where, uh, uh, the, the, the conditions that, uh, the, uh, applicant and the neighborhood were encouraging the commission to consider, uh, were pretty well clear stated and, uh, and I, 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 I don't think there's any reason not to vote tonight. Uh, you, you've all been at all of these meetings. You've all heard all of the testimony. You've had the opportunity to question anything that one of the witnesses says, uh, and, uh, you know, the record is before you, so. Um, we, we, we think that it's appropriate for you to proceed.
All right, voting people.
For what it's worth, I, I feel the same way. If, if I just sort of hypothesize that instead of being absent, we had two members who had passed away. Would we, would we, would we restart the whole process and have all the hearings again from day one? I, I, I doubt it.
I wasn't gonna use that as an example, but it is a good one.
I'm certainly not gonna talk to Dave about what you just said or, or.
Well, David is dead to me anyway, since he's going to Hawaii.
And, and you know, we now know that Mister Baralek is weird enough to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have, we have asked her to. Okay, you guys. Dennis, what do you wanna do?
I wanna, uh, close and vote.
Okay.
Both, but particularly on the first one.
Okey-dokey. Victoria, uh, Victoria?
I was in vote, but I missed one meeting, one meeting, but I'm not sure whether this was discussed or not. On that meeting that I missed.
Well, who, we know you need five, so who?
I, then, then there's some, there's another voter.
Play it safe, cause we know Low and Mister Low and Mister Baralek have not missed one of these, right?
Okay, well, I did miss one meeting, so, and I can't say with a hundred percent certainty that this was not discussed at that meeting, so.
We could look it up, if you remember the date, we could look it up real fast, but.
Why don't we just let one of them vote?
Okey-dokey, so now I'm gonna ask them, Mister Baralek is ready to vote because we could have died. Um, and Yolo, and, um, Mister Low.
Um, I, I think we should, uh, vote, but, uh, I hope they don't come after me.
I, I, I promise.
Not you.
All right, Nick, that leaves you and me as the, as the, as the people who are dragging, being dragged along. What do you think?
Um, I don't like to be dragged, so why don't we, uh, go ahead and let's see what we can do with this.
Alrighty, so therefore this application is now going to be closed. I, I am, I am always amenable to going along with people when I don't violently disagree with them. So we are now closing the, um, re-subdivision application and we will take that motion and, um, the next one, the site plan, um, that will end our public hearing now and we will go into discussion and decision mode. So Mister Bazili, you are off duty and I hope that Mister Bristol was clear enough or we're gonna put him in detention.
No, he never has been, but thank you. Do you have to ask for public comment here or not?
Yeah, thank you for your honesty, Mister Bazili.
Oh yeah, I forgot. Does anybody from the public have any comment on this application? I'm so, I'm so glad you reminded.
For which application is this?
Yeah, it's just the subdivision only.
The re-sub.
Re, re-sub.
Re-subdivision only, sorry, on the re-sub only. No, okay, we are in good shape then. Um.
You can breathe, Mister Hegney.
Yeah, okay, so we've now ended the public hearing. And, uh, we are ready to, um, decide our first one, which is the final re-subdivision. And we will gladly entertain a motion.
Okay, bear with me, this is a lot of moving parts here. Uh, one twenty-four Old Mill Road, application PLPC twenty-two-one zero-two-six for a final subdivision in the RA four zone. The applicant is requested to final re-subdivision to relocate a common lot line and transfer uh, four acres from Lot One to Lot Two, as indicated in the approved subdivision, uh, number one-one-nine-seven map six-nine-nine-four from nineteen ninety-four. Uh, the commission finds that the app, uh, the application meets the standards of section six-two fifty-eight, so on so forth. Um, yeah, to six-three-zero-two of the town Greenwich subdivision regulations and six-two-zero-five of the building zone regulations application. The applicant will provide a proposed septic system to be located within the same parcel as the building. It will serve Lot Number Two in accordance with Connecticut Public Health Code. Uh, the Sylvanus Selig Risk Mill was placed on the National Historic uh, Register of Places in nineteen ninety. And in nineteen ninety-four, subdivision one-one-ninety-seven contained a declaration of restrictions that describes the conservation, open space and required a minimum of ten acres, lot area of acres, a wetland easement and a fifty-foot setback around the node of wetlands and watercourses. Uh, and conservation easement listing prohibited activities and a historic facade easement of the Sylvanus Selig Mill located on Lot Four. Uh, conservation issued a memo dated four-five-twenty-one indicating no further comment regarding the application. Zoning issue comments stated for one indicating the subdivision, me through requirements of the building zone regulations.
Nick, you're fading in and out. Can you speak up a little bit?
Yep. Uh, DPW issue comments dated three-four indicating no issues with the proposed lot line revision. Health Department issued a memo dated three-eleven-twenty-one indicating comments concerning public water wells on the site. And, uh, Wetlands issued a permanent needs questionnaire dated eight, uh, seventeen-twenty and it came no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the application for final re-subdivision with the following comments. Uh, the applicant shall abide by the current declaration of restrictions as it pertains to the preservation of the Selig Mill. Um, the applicant Greenwich Historical Society and Greenwich Preservation Network shall continue discussions as best, the best course of action to preserve the Selig Mill structure and revisions to the declaration, uh, restrictions if required. Uh, the Greenwich Historical Society and Greenwich Preservation Network letter dated April twelfth, two thousand and one shall be included in the project file and a note referencing this letter shall be placed on the recorded subdivision map. The Greenwich Historical Society inspection report dated, uh, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-one shall be included in the project file and a note referencing the report shall be placed on the recorded subdivision map. Um, as per the council, applicant's council letter dated four-twelve-twenty-one, the property owner has agreed to remove the deteriorated, uh, rear shed roof, reinforce the roof structure and rework the area with plywood and asphalt shingles. Uh, as per the applicant's council letter dated four-twelve-twenty-one, the applicant HDC and Greenwich Preservation Network, we pursue retaining a structural engineer to determine what steps, if any, are needed to support the Gris Mill stone in the building. Um, as for the applicant's council letter, again, dated, uh, four-twelve-twenty-one, applicant HDC and Greenwich Preservation may explore, uh, establishing a friends group for the building and creating a, um, separate portal for it. Uh, the applicant shall provide written confirmation from the state of Connecticut Department of, uh, Public Health regarding whether the proposal would need to provide approved public water supply wells for the site. And the applicant shall abide by any applicable restrictions or conditions placed on the properties um, from the previous subdivision one-one-nine-seven and the applicant to address any all outstanding or into departmental issues. That's it.
I was muted. I, it's sorry, that, sorry, the noise. Um, do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Mister Baralek has seconded. Uh, Mister Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sorry about the noise, you guys. Mister Baralek?
Aye.
Mister Low?
Aye.
Mister McRae?
Uh, aye.
And Albin is also aye. The motion passes five, nine. And Albin is also aye. The motion passes 5-0. And with that, we will go to the next motion.
Okay, I think I can do this in about 20 minutes. Okay, 124 Old Mill Road, application PLPC 2020 0311, final site plan special permit. Applicant is seeking approval to establish a philanthropic, filling institution and construct an additional building on site, the result of which would further exceed 150,000 cubic feet in building volume in the RA4 zone. Whereas three existing buildings on site are intended to serve programs for the proposed use of the property. The mansion will be restored and preserved and host up to 30 guests for meeting events. The log cabin located near the Great Pond will hold up to 15 guests for spiritual wellness retreats. The horse barn will be restored and used as a pre-function and or small lecture space, and will host up to 100 guests. And the newly constructed event barn will use salvage materials so as to maintain the historic feel of the existing buildings. And the space will serve as a conference event room and can accommodate 250 guests. The applicant has received approval for a final so, for a re-subdivision to relocate a common lot line and to transfer approximately four acres from Lot 1 to Lot 2. The commission finds that the application being sought is a philanthropic, profit institution under section 694A12. The applicant foundation house is covered under IRS designation 501(c)(3) exemption status of the Giving Back Fund, as indicated in the letter dated 2/1/21 from the Giving Back Fund. Conservation issued a memo on 5/4/21 indicating no further comment regarding the application. Zoning issued comments dated 4/1 indicating the site plan meets the requirements of the Building Zone Regulations. DPW issued comments dated 3/4/21 indicating recent mill prior to zoning permit to address outstanding issues. Health Department issued a memo dated 3/11/21 indicating approval of a septic system for the proposed event barn in replacement areas of the existing systems. Wetlands issued a permanent needs questionnaire dated 8/17/20 indicating no action required. Beta issued comments, 1/11/21 indicating concerns on outstanding issues. ARC issued comments from their 2/3/21 meeting indicating it does not return with comments. Parking, the applicant has identified parking for 16 vehicles on the existing paved areas around the main house. Five handicap spaces in the southeastern portion of the event barn, excuse me, and 140 parking spaces available for valet and patron parking in their proposed parking fields located to the south of the greenhouse. Excuse me, therefore, motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. The applicant shall maintain its stated IRS designation of 501(c)(3) exempt status. The applicant shall notify the commission if for any reason the stated IRS designation is changed or altered. If for any reason the the use per section 694A12 or the IRS designation exemption status is not maintained, the site shall return to a single-family residence, and all proposed events cease. The applicant shall provide a letter per section 614(c)(7) attesting to the combined volume of all the structures on the property, existing and proposed structures of the property. As the internal road network is reviewed as driveways, the applicant has indicated no parking will be allowed on the internal roadways. And the applicant shall widen the internal roadways to fit 18 feet. The commission will waiver the roadway with requirement to 18 feet from the required 20 feet as per town code. A durable base shall be provided and maintained for the proposed parking fields. The applicant's ground crews shall monitor the effective frequent parking on the proposed parking fields. And if any of the grass parking areas show sign of deterioration, the applicant shall agree to install a porous paving system to support the parking in high-traffic areas. During scheduled events in the property, the applicant shall post staff to guide guests to designated parking areas and handicap drop-off areas. Designated parking areas for handicap and drop-off areas shall be within the indicated by traffic codes or other clearly identifiable measures. The applicant shall provide written confirmation from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health regarding whether the proposal would need to provide approved public water supplies for the well. Per ARC comments from 2/3/21, knowing signage is anticipated at the front. Uplighting should be used as an as-needed basis for events, and dark sky standards should be adhered to.
That uplighting is a dead duck. It's in violation of our regs. Building uplighting is in violation of our regs.
Okay, well, can you strike that?
Yep, strike that.
So struck. Now, where was it? Oh, street signage shall be limited to that as provided by section 6163. Any proposed street signage shall be reviewed by zoning enforcement and ARC. The applicant shall provide written confirmation from the State of Connecticut. Oh, I said that already, sorry. Per applicant's council dated 4/8/1 and agreed to by the Round Hill Association and their council, the following operational conditions are imposed on the site. Shall I go through all 10, read them all out, or are we on the same page with the 10 that were applied in this letter?
No, I think we I think you need to say them. And you just said, it's hard to, for some reason, you kind of cut it out, as Marguerite has said. You you said, what can you repeat that that whole sentence, please?
Which one?
The one about you said something about per the per the neighbor association or something?
Yes, it was that per the applicant's council letter dated 4/8/21 and agreed to by the Round Hill Association. The following operational conditions are imposed on the site plan.
Right, okay, go ahead. And I think you need to state what they are.
Okay, here we go. Number one, events with 101 to 250 persons excluding catering and staff are considered large events. Foundation House may hold large events as follows. Daytime large events, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. on Sunday. Evening large events, Thursday only, from 5 p.m. to 10 p.m. Friday and Saturday only, from 5 p.m. to 11 p.m. Number two, upon the conclusion of an evening large event, Foundation House shall promptly complete all cleanup and closing activities. Foundation House shall endeavor to complete these activities by 12 a.m. and Thursdays by 11 p.m., meaning that the site is quiet and dark at the time. For any event, having 30 cars or more, Foundation House should have as some cost arranged for police officers to be located outside of the exit of the property and at the intersection of 124 Old Mill Road and 1 Round Hill Road to assist with traffic flow and circulation. There shall be no more than, number four, there shall be no more than four large events in any month from April 2021 to March 2022. Round Hill Association representatives to meet with Foundation House in April 2022 to review Foundation House events over the prior year. Foundation House will be permitted to a trial period from May 1, 2022 through September 30, 2022, to allow up to six large events per month. And extra-large events, events of more than 250 people excluding catering and staff every other month. At the expiration of the trial period, Foundation House and Round Hill Association shall meet to discuss any issues, concerns which have arisen due to the increase of large events from four to six per month, and the extra-large events during the trial period. Should Round Hill Association feel necessary, it may request that large event schedule be reviewed by planning and zoning staff.
I'm sorry, and I think one key thing is it's not a trial period. It's it's a period of reporting.
Right, that's what we agreed on, I think.
Yeah, so it's it's not, it's it's not a a site plan approval that is dependent on some sort of trial. It is an approval reporting system in place for the to prove that what they stated would happen with their traffic is in fact the case.
Okay. During the period of reporting, should our Round Hill feel it necessary, it may request large event schedule be reviewed by planning and zoning staff, and should PNC staff deem it necessary, large event schedule may be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Number five, if upon expiration of the trial period, Foundation House intends to seek an amendment, a special permit to permanently expand the the number of permissible large events from four to six and/or to permit extra-large events beyond the trial period, it may do so upon the approval of planning and zoning department staff. If Round Hill Association has no objection, and if Round Hill objects to either the expansion of large events from four to six per month, or the continuation of large events beyond the trial period, the commission commission review will be required.
I mean, we'll hold on a second. We talked about this, and we had to be very careful how we crafted that language, that we weren't granting the Round Hill Association power on the commission. So I think we would only say that if there was a neighborhood complaint, if there had been complaints filed regarding the operations, then the commission will reconsider. But the decision whether or not something goes to the commission is not the Round Hill Associations.
Okay, it's goes it goes from neighbor to staff, staff to commission.
Something like a complaint. So our actual wording in the decision later should be if a complaint is filed to planning and zoning staff, or if complaints are filed or with the zoning enforcement officer, then this matter, subject to them, their decision, departmental decision to the town planner's decision, for example, would be referred to the commission for review.
Do we need to drop all reference to quote trial period?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that'll be done.
Yeah.
Blanket statement, yeah.
Blanket, yeah, replace all.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's neighbor to staff.
Oh, Pat, you're muted. Whatever you said, we missed it.
Oh, man, it was so good, two guys. Oh. Katie had a good word there. It's in the trial period. Was it period of monitoring? Is that what you said?
Reporting.
Reporting, thank you.
Yeah.
But monitoring, monitoring works too, actually, you know. I like reporting. Yeah, I like reporting.
Of course, because she said it. Is that why?
Yeah. She the boss. Okay, moving right along, MacRae. Don't let the don't let the kids mess you up.
Yeah, I have this stage. Spotlight's mine. Now that I lost my place here.
We stopped you at Round Hill Association doesn't have the power.
Yeah, it was complete.
Six, for the duration of extra-large events will be subject to the requirements of and count towards the number of permissible large events per month. Foundation House will maintain a website and a calendar of large events and extra-large events, which will be updated monthly for the public to know when such events are occurring. And events shall be maintained on the calendar website for at least a year from when they occurred. Foundation House will maintain an open dialogue with Round Hill Association, and will meet with Round Hill Association as necessary. The use of the property shall be limited to specific activities of the Foundation House approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And number 10, Foundation House, use of the property shall be not for commercial profit. Then Foundation House shall be an entity described in the section 501(c)(3) of the IRS Code 1986 as amended, which has been recognized by the Internal Revenue Service as the tax and federal income taxation that is equivalent entity as the commission and the town attorney deem appropriate, and must be either a domestic Connecticut entity or qualified. And the applicant shall address any and all reigning staff or interdepartmental issues.
Okey dokey. Do I have a second for that?
Second, second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Two, two things I want to just ask. They there's, I don't know if you want to just state them as whereas clauses or whatever, but they they do have the that horse trailers can show up and horses can use the trails. That was a public amenity that they had offered. Part of this was one. And two, they also stated that I don't think this is a requirement, but just as a whereas that they were voluntarily going to keep this property on the on the tax rolls. Again, I don't think that's a requirement per se, but I think we should note that in the decision.
I think it's worth noting that they volunteered. I was wondering about that today, that they offered that up. Great point.
Correct, Mr. McRae, that that's separate and apart from the status.
Right, the whereas.
Yeah, because that's.
It's separate.
But the commission, that must be. This is just a thank you for offering.
Separate from 501. Okay, great. And then they were, they will, it's basically providing public access to the horse trails.
Right. Yeah.
Horse trails and and
It was trailer park.
And trailer parking for horses.
Right.
Okay.
And then also, I know you talked about the the Selig House in the re- in the re-subdivision. But do you think it's worth noting, it might not be, but do you think it's worth noting in this decision that there was an agreement or an an offer that that the property owner would at least get a list together with prices of what's required in order to A, preserve what's there now and then be restored to some condition? An understanding that she wasn't, that the property owner was not on the hook to do that work, per se, I mean, but at least that she had offered up to at least price it out.
Okay, we had put all that in the subdivision. If you thought, if you think we can go back in, let me make a note of that to make sure that it's there or mentioned. And then the site plan actually references the the approval of the the approval of the subdivision, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. Nice job, Nick.
We're not done yet, huh? Wait a little second. Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, so we want to vote on this or not?
Okey dokey. So now might I have a second to the amended resolution? Mr. Barilak has seconded the resolution as amended.
Mr. Yaski did.
Mr. Yaski did.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Yaski. I'm sorry, Mr. Yaski has seconded the amended reg- resolution. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Barilak?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes 5-0, and we are all done. Folks, see you tomorrow at 5 p.m.
Thank you, everybody.
Tomorrow, 5 p.m. Don't forget.
Katie?
Yes, I'll call you. Yeah.
Do you want to arrange your time?
Oh, no, you don't. Are you still there? Oh, good. Everyone froze for a second. I had that problem earlier.
Do you want to talk at a specific time tomorrow morning?
Yeah, let me, let me just see. Sorry. Can you do 9 o'clock?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. Do you want me to call you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Perfect. I'll talk to you then. Thank you so much.
Okay, yep, thank you. See you, everybody.